Good morning. Welcome to the January 26, 2015, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you will stand with us, please. Commissioner Rhonda Allen will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Rhonda?
Dear heaven, my father, thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to live in Rutherford County. Thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us as a community and its wonderful citizens. Lord, we just ask that you'll give us each wisdom and discernment as we go about conducting the business of this county. Help us to all move forward honorably and with your interests at heart. It's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have corn.
Thank you, Gail. Item number four has been removed. The minutes are not ready. Item number five, election of our officers. Call on Mike Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The nomination could be discussed at the last evening meeting, potential for officers, and the consensus is to have you retain your chairmanship and in terms of a vice chair, which is currently Craig Lynch, and Craig is potentially rolling off the...
Soon.
Soon. That being said, the nomination for myself, Mike Kush, for vice chair, and if anybody else would like to... Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, you want to open up the floor to additional nominations. Right now, we have you as current chair and me on the docket for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion nomination cease.
I'll second that.
Be elected by acclamation.
Okay, we had a motion that nomination cease and Mike Kush be vice chair, Jeff Phillips be chair by acclamation. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Congratulations. The announcement...
(laughing).
The announcement that Mike just made about Craig Lynch is kind of a blow. Craig has a couple of times threatened to leave the commission. We got on our knees and begged him to stay for a while longer, and he's consented to do that, but he's been a member of this commission for as long as I can remember.
As I can remember.
And a very valuable asset.
How long is that? (laughing). Go to Gail.
(laughing).
Okay, Gail.
I'll check on that.
You have homework for next meeting. Gail was in junior high, I think. (laughing).
We appreciate all of...
You too.
All of the things that you've meant, not only to this commission but to this county, Craig. Thank you. Still look forward to working with you the remainder of this year. Items withdrawn. Doug?
No, sir. Everything's still on the docket.
Okay. Item seven, plat extensions request. Item seven A, Staghorn subdivision request for a 12-month extension. Eric, is that... Mike, is that you?
Actually, I'll handle that since it's for a plat extension. Staghorn subdivision, this is something that was originally zoned back in 2007, 2008 timeframe. We did see a preliminary plat for this development. No construction was ever started with it really ever since 2008 or so. It's just been extended every year. I know there's some issues out there with the water. This was a subdivision. It was actually approved as a planned development again, but it was approved with sprinkler, residential sprinkler systems because the fire flows out in that area weren't going to be adequate. Yeah, the development, if you recall, is on Midland Road, almost to the county line. But with that, developer still is wanting to pursue this. However, their plat has about to expire, so they're still asking for an extension to that plat. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any kind of policy about how long we keep extending these things?
Well, when...
He's having a fit back there behind you to talk or something.
At the time, when this was approved, we didn't. We do now. So now, that being said, there are some changes to state law that have occurred that kind of lock in a development for about five years, I think is what the timeframe is. You'll be seeing some amendments, and we'll talk about that a little later, but you'll be seeing some amendments from us regarding that for the subdivision regulations. But to answer your question, at the time, there wasn't... They could just keep asking for extensions.
So would this be their... If we approved this, this would be their first one, right?
No, ma'am. This will probably be like their sixth or seventh.
No, no, no. Under the new...
Well, yes, but this was approved under old regulations, so they're still kind of grandfathered under those regulations.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I see what you're saying.
Jamie, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to let... I didn't want to make it like he's keep... He's... I'm Jamie Reed with SCC. As if the developers keep renewing this. He's actually... We're waiting with... We're coordinating with CUD on a water tower and water lines brought out to that area. I'm currently working on that subdivision for the step system and stuff to renew all the stuff for the state. So I just want to let you know that we are waiting, and it has taken a couple of years, but we've been coordinating with CUD for that line to get out there. So just thought I'd let you all know that, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All those?
Is there any way to make a note this is the last one or something? Because I mean, this is getting pretty ridiculous. I mean, we're seven or eight years in, and this was a pretty aggressive design, controversial because it was so compact and everything, and, you know, and here we are, seven, eight years later, and we could be here another... Next year, you know, doing this all over again and...
Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily think you need to make it like a condition of approval or anything like that, but I think just you're saying that, and if that's kind of the consensus of the planning commission, I think Jamie could take that back to the applicant and say, you know, it looks like this is, you know, time to, you know, really get moved. I know there's things maybe that are outside their control to a certain extent, but I think you can at least make your concern known.
At least me. I'm thinking pretty far down the pipe to still be given extensions.
So Doug, theoretically, if we should deny an applicant's request, what happens next for them?
Well, what they would have to do at that point is they just have to resubmit everything, and it would be under today's regulations, is what would happen.
Got you.
Now, that being said, there may be a few things that they would have to change anyway, even if they'd gone forward just with stormwater requirements and things like that. Some of that has changed since that time, so they may have to make some changes anyway. But if you were just to say, you know, what, you've had your chance, it's been long enough, we're not going to approve anymore, they would... They could reapprove, or resubmit, rather. They just would have to do it under current regs.
Got you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item eight, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item eight A, estates of Lewis Downs. The item number is 14-1-009, 15 acres on 29.15 lots, excuse me, on 29.5 acres, zoned RM, located off Rock Springs, Midland Road, New South Developers LLC. The applicant, Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As you stated, this property is the estates of Lewis Downs. It's located off of Rock Springs, Midland Road. It's immediately adjacent to the Lewis Downs subdivision, which we considered a plat just within the last few months for a section, a new section of that development. The applicant's proposing to subdivide the property into 15 lots with conventional septic tanks. You have a copy of the plans on your table, plus on your screen right there. That kind of shows the overall master plan of the development.
Our sunscreens aren't working.
Oh, God. They don't on... I'm sorry. Just turn them on. I probably forgot to...
That would help.
Sorry about that. You should be seeing what's on the TV here in a moment if it hasn't come on already. Let's see. Only domestic water services available for this development. Because of this, the applicants have requested a waiver to the fire hydrant requirements, and if that is granted, then these lots would have to be developed with residential sprinkler systems. The applicant also proposes to place a stormwater detention pond. You can kind of see it here. I'll get another page up here that we can take a look at. The applicant's asking for a waiver to place this stormwater detention pond on Lot 10. The regulations that are currently in effect for the county or subdivision regulations require stormwater detention retention ponds to be on their own lots. This is shown on, again, Lot 10. It would be taken care of by the owner of Lot 10. The applicant has discussed this with staff on a couple of different occasions. We've relayed to them that, you know, we don't think that this is... We're just not very comfortable with this particular situation. I'll let Mike speak more to it if he'd like to, but the applicant, we basically told them, said, you know, if this is really what you want to pursue, go ahead and bring it to the commission and make your case to the commission, and you guys can make the decision whether or not to approve the subdivision with that waiver in there. Besides this particular issue that we're looking at here and the fire hydrant waiver, the plats have been updated to our comments. Really, these are the only outstanding items that we have. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Hughes if he's got any other comments.
Essentially, it's a long-term maintenance issue. Being able to maintain the pond to our standards and having it under the management of a homeowners' association, an entity that will have perpetual existence, is what we're looking for, and that's why we changed the regulations. If it's on a lot with a residential lot, it becomes the requirement of the homeowner to maintain, and that's an issue where we have that it won't be maintained over time.
You'll also see on your tables, there's a letter here from J.D. Kias, kind of explaining their reasons for asking for the waiver, but I believe they're here as well with the applicant to discuss.
Hey, Doug, as I glance at this letter, explain to me why they're thinking that this now becomes a 12 or 13 acre... Why they're giving up the extra 11 acres, I guess. I'm a little confused as to... Does that make that 12 acres unusable?
Well, and, you know, Mike, feel free to jump in.
Go ahead.
This area here, I mean, this would all be in an easement regardless.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was on its own lot, it would still be for stormwater purposes, and it would be noted as such on the plat. But, I mean, really, after the easement's in place, there's really not a whole lot that they can do with it beyond that. I mean, they'd be responsible for maintaining it, but, you know, they couldn't be using it for pretty much anything except for the drainage of the subdivision.
So the dimension of the stormwater pond is how many acres? I mean, it looks like it's a bunch, right?
Yeah.
Let me forward to some of the different pages. Oh, it says the area limits...
Well, that's the whole disturbance area.
That's the whole thing, yeah.
It's probably a couple acres itself, easy. I think what the issue is, they... The land behind the pond, they want to throw in the lot with Lot 10.
Okay, so land behind the pond, opposite of Lot 10, how much of that land is still in their jurisdiction? Or how much of that do they own?
They all... Yeah, this whole lot is 14 and a half acre... Well, 14 and three-quarter acres, excuse me, with the pond.
That's...
Oh, with the pond.
With the pond and the land behind it.
Oh, okay. I was thinking that 10... Okay, I see. I see it now. So behind the pond is what? Would they want to develop back there, or is that just pretty much the end of their property?
It wouldn't be the end of the property. It would all just be part of Lot 10.
Okay.
I haven't heard... How much is behind the pond? An acre, five acres? We might all get somebody up there, but reading this letter, it mentions land behind the pond.
Jamie again from SCC. The land... I want to go back. This is not the first time we've done this. We just did this on Stewart's Creek, Stewart Springs, Section 4, one owner doing a homeowners' maintenance, somewhat, a little bit different, but it's the same thing. One owner took over the pond for that section or that subdivision. And here, we want to do the same thing because that lot... So now, you're requesting that the homeowners' association maintain the 12 acres back behind there. What we would rather do, the developer would rather do, is keep the pond on that one owner and make it one big lot. It's a shallow pond. It's not like it's an eight-foot-deep pond, hard to maintain and have...
How much is the pond itself?
Two acres, something like that, acre and a half.
How much land is behind the pond?
Like 12 acres.
Well, if some in front of the pond, I mean, that doesn't add up.
Well, I don't...
14 acres total, there's two in the pond and 12 behind it. What's all this...
Let's say 10 acres. I mean, it's a lot of land. I mean, it's not one acres or two. It's, you know, seven...
Majority is behind the pond.
Yeah, majority of the property's behind the pond, and the reason being, there's no soils back there, and that's why the pond is there because of the way the soils are conducive to the pond. And then the land behind it, we'd rather that go with the lot so the homeowner'd have a nice, big, buildable lot where he could do stuff behind the pond. He could build a barn or whatever back there.
Is there room on either side of the pond to get a driveway back there or access back there?
Yeah.
We don't...
Well, I mean, he wouldn't need it if it was part of his lot. He'd be able to go around it either way, yeah.
But he doesn't need to be driving through the pond?
No, no.
Or fooling with the pond.
Yeah, but around it. He could go around it, yes, sir.
Had issues in the past with one person owning the pond, and they go in and take berms out and different things, and all things on the pond anymore.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Lot 10 is 14 acres?
Yes.
Twelve of it being behind the pond.
Correct, something like that. But, I mean, it's a nice-sized lot, and rather than having one lot at the end, they were requesting that we put the pond and everything and the land behind the pond with that one lot, and then him maintain his land behind it. It's a shallow pond. It's not like it's a maintenance nightmare or anything.
And you're saying that soil conditions prohibit moving the pond?
Yeah, because you go further back. It's more, I think, of the glacial rock or something like that, further back, so we try... We had to keep it up closer to that.
Jamie, the acres we're talking about behind the pond, could it be, if the homeowners got it, homeowners' association got it, would it not be green space for the rest of the people in the subdivision, or do they have access to it? Do they not have access to...
I guess you could get back there to it. I mean, but if... I mean, you'd rather not people going down your lot line to go back behind a pond to do something, but you could. I mean...
They couldn't go down the lot line. They'd have to have...
Yeah, you'd have to do a 50-foot... You'd have to do a... You separate that lot. Yeah, you're right. Like a 50-foot deal going back. It'd be a flag lot back here to the back.
Homeowners' Association out there now, right?
Mm-hmm.
What do they want? Do they want...
No, not on this. No, there's no homeowners' association. This is a separate...
But there is in Lewis Down.
Yes, because they got a swim and pull and stuff, but this is a separate subdivision from that. It's total... It's a different...
It won't be pulled into that, that it can't be pulled in.
It's its own deal. It's a separate deal, separate developers.
So there is no homeowners' association at this point?
No, see, that's what they were trying to get away from, too. I mean, now you don't... They got one owner that's going to get a nice, big lot to maintain his lot and the land behind it, but he'll be responsible for it, just like Stewart Springs, Section 4, off-site guy.
So if you incorporate the pond in the Lot 10, then whoever purchases Lot 10...
Will have to sign a maintenance...
Is 100% responsible.
Correct.
No homeowners, no...
He'll sign the same maintenance agreement that the homeowners' association would sign. He would have to sign. He would be responsible for it, just like Stewart Springs, Section 4.
Okay. So will this pond have a liner typically?
Mm-mm. Just an outlet structure.
Okay, so there's no clay liner? There's no...
Mm-mm. No, you don't want it to... No, you don't want it clay. That was the deal. We got to have it infiltrate in the soils and stuff.
So this is a shallow depression, basically, that you said was not more than a couple of feet deep? If I'm not mistaken. Is that not right, Mike? Am I telling the truth?
Somewhere around a couple of feet, because if it's greater than that, we have to have a fence and stuff like that around it and stuff.
Well, that was my next question. Does he have to fence this?
Mm-mm. I mean, it's a shallow indention. We're actually burm-ing up a little bit around it just to get the volume in it.
Yeah.
That's why it's two acres, you know? We could have shrunk it down and burmed up around it, but then you'd have to fill all the lots that same height.
And most about three foot deep.
At the back around that... Around the...
Near the outlet structure.
Outlet structure. Yeah, just...
To the top of the burn. The issue is, it's long-term maintenance. I mean...
Yeah.
You have a buyer now that says he'll take care of it and maintain it, but, you know, over time, this lot gets sold, and we have a lot of subdivisions where somebody will come to us and say, "We didn't know this pond was on my property," you know? "We didn't know that we're supposed to maintain it." It's just...
Well, in this case, when the deed transfers, that'll be part of that deed. I mean...
Yeah, that's not really an argument.
That's not an argument, because it'll be on the plat, too. The lot will be a recorded easement on that lot of record that had to be maintained, and that would go with... To the next owner, whoever buys it. That'd be part of their deed.
Will there be language in the deed that if someone fails to maintain it, then someone can get in there and the other homeowners or the homeowners' association can get in there and maintain?
Well, I mean, it's an easement with the county. The county, if...
The county would have to come in and maintain.
The county would have to come into it and then put a lane on the property. I mean, we can put whatever... I mean, we can put whatever type of language that deems, but the county would be... It'd be in an easement, recorded easement.
It would be an easement.
Yes, yes, sir. A recorded...
There will be easement language in it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That'd be good.
Something else I'd like to point out, you know, the subdivision Stewart Springs was brought up as far as, you know, something similar like that was approved, probably within the last six months or so. I forget the exact date that that was brought in. But something to keep in mind with that is while, yes, it's a similar situation out there, and Jamie kind of alluded to this, we're not talking about apples and apples here. That was an existing pond out there, and then that subdivision that was developed with it, you know, the engineering staff felt that the situation that was presented, it would work... It would actually help the whole area better if they did it in that way, you know, combining what was proposed with the existing pond on one lot. So this is a little bit different. They're creating this, you know? I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that this isn't the same type situation as Stewart Springs, Section 4.
Yeah. He is correct on that, but it's still one owner's maintaining the existing pond and outlet.
And I'll just reiterate, like Mike said, you know, we changed that in the regulations to the new subdivision regulations to say we want it on its own individual lot for long-term maintenance issues. You know, there was a reason we did that, to get away from one person owning it. I understand the discussion and everything, but we did have a reason for doing that, we've alluded to.
Jamie, on that land behind the pond, what's it now? Is it an open field? Is it grown up?
Just an open field. Just, yeah. There's some trees back there and pasture land and stuff.
But it's not thick? It's not...
I remember it being real thick. Is it real thick? I don't think it is, no.
What's the price point on these houses?
I have no idea.
$3,000 per foot.
Okay. Because that's part of what I'm thinking, too, is, you know, I think our... One of our main concerns is maintenance, and, you know, what's it going to look like if we leave it up to one person and stuff?
There's going to be some nice homes.
Yeah.
It's not going to be a...
So you're... I'm assuming you're pulling drainage and storm runoff from all perimeters around the pond, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's...
There's a drainage easement.
It's coming from all properties.
Yes, sir.
Yes, roadside ditches and stuff like that.
They're managing pre versus post.
All right, so if we stick with our guns as the current regulations are written, then what happens to the maintenance of the pond? I'm still a little confused about that.
Well, you'd have to have a separate lot, and then homeowner... Every lot owner'd have to pay a fee every month for the maintenance of that pond, and that homeowner at the end would just have a small lot compared to a smaller lot compared to having a 14-acre lot.
So his... Property 10, then, would end somewhere...
On the back, before the pond.
Before the pond.
Yeah, be a little triangle.
Yeah.
Mike, what are the implications...
No, no, go ahead.
What are the implications if a detention pond is not mowed, or what maintenance is involved there for...
Well, it becomes... Over time, the outlet structure becomes clogged. It doesn't function like it should, and it becomes a hindrance more than an asset. Essentially, just doesn't function like it was designed.
That's assuming that there's no branches, tree branches, I can guess, and that's what's going to bog it up, but if you just grew grass up in there...
Right.
You can't allow anything to graze in there, right?
Well, I don't know if there's anything against regulations on that. It's just the functionality of it. If it's not cleaned out, over time, sediment builds up in the culverts, the outlet structure, and it just doesn't function like it was originally designed to.
Yeah, you don't want animals in there. Sheep's feet compacting the soil.
And if I had a 14-acre lot, I mean, besides just mow it, what are you going to do with it but put a horse on it?
You could... Well, all the stuff in the back, you just have to... I would want them to not get around the outlet structure and stuff like that, maybe not fall. But you can't... This case is just a little two-foot swell. It's not that much.
But where in the regulations are there's anything the homeowner has to agree to abide by the rules on this drainage?
Well, we'd have to establish a long-term maintenance plan, and it... That clearly dictates who is going to maintain it and who...
So that landowner has to agree to that, and when he sells it...
Yeah.
Next landowner.
Next one gets it.
Then the next landowner has to sign on to that. Needs to be updated.
Of course, an HOA isn't a fix-all.
No, sir.
HOA, the only thing they deal with is the pond.
Yeah.
There's a good chance in 10 years now they're defunct. People may know there is an HOA.
That's right.
This guy up here on Lot 2, say, "I don't care anything about that pond," so...
That's what happened.
HOA sounds good, but they're all pointing fingers at the other 13 property owners and stuff, at least with one person. That person's got something they've signed that says they are in agreement. I mean, I can argue either side of this thing.
Yes, sir.
You know, but HOA's with nothing but a pond, problematic, because if they have some green space or, you know, some sort of signage, you know, that they have to keep up and all, they're collecting dues and doing whatever, they all forget about this stormwater pond, don't even know there is an HOA, you know, down the road, and I don't know.
Not my problem.
Yeah, and I can speak to that if I may. I'm J.D. Kias. I'm the attorney for New South Developers. I think our concern is with the small... It's going to be a small homeowners' association, and those are inherently problematic. I mean, I've seen it before. The smaller the group, the less likely you are to get the volunteers, the money collected, and when there's only one thing to take care of, you're right, that tends to get overlooked and not taken care of. A landowner, a person that actually owns that land, is going to take pride in his land, presumably, and take care of it, much more likely than a homeowners' association would, especially with that land being back behind a home, not even visible to the other homeowners. So I think that's our point here.
Just devil's advocate, since the acreage is so large, it's an agricultural type of situation that's not just a residential lot, so what's to prevent them from running a couple of horses on that? What's to prevent them from doing it?
The subdivision restrictions would prevent that.
Okay. What's to prevent him from doing it? Five years from now, okay, he's got stuff running on there. Who's going to go in there and tell him to stop?
Well, I mean, you could ask...
That's my concern, okay?
Yeah, sure. You could ask the same question, though, with the homeowners' association. What's to prevent them from doing something back there that would be problematic?
Right.
And now you've got 13, 14 people using that land as opposed to just one.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. However, the problem in my mind is somewhere down the road, not next year or a year after, but somewhere down the road, everything is mature out there. It's been there 15 years, and someone's going to say, "I'm not putting up a fence, and I'm not going to keep the two horses or ponies or whatever I've got back there from going in there. I'm not going to do it," and nobody's going to be able to tell him that he can't. Nobody.
Well, without taking legal action, because the restrictive covenants are, you know, civil and may be enforced.
They would take... Yeah, they'd just be like RVs parked in the front yard. It may be the covenant says no RVs parked in there. Well, you have to take them and do some action to get that taken care of, or somebody don't mow the yard. Who's going to maintain... Tell the 14 other owners that they don't mow their yard, you know? 18 inches high grass and stuff, then what's the... You know?
Question is, will we get more faith in the homeowners' association? What we require a lot of times are do with... Have more faith in the landowner. Both of them will wind up in court, right? Homeowners' Association, if they won't... If they won't take care of the pond because it's one issue, they won't take care of one horse just because it's an issue. Same, same. Jamie, how can we present these things that are so difficult?
Do I?
These things are so difficult.
I don't know. It's just 15 lots or 14.
But if he doesn't maintain it, what's going to happen? His property will flood.
Well, I mean, these are... I don't want to get... These are large estate-type lots and tend to, you know, I don't know how to say it correctly. Yeah, and pristine yards Yeah, and, and, and pristine yards and stuff, and I would, if it was personally, me personally, if I lived there, I'd wanna be mowing and, and striping my backyard, back in the back versus having a homeowners come out there blowing grass all around my fence which surrounds the pond. I would rather have me maintain it, and, and who's to say they don't cut it but three times a year? You only have to, my understanding is, you know, there's only so many times they gotta cut it anyhow. And if I was in a big three thousand square foot house on a nice lot, and behind me, they're not cutting the grass but two or three times a year, I'd be upset about it. If me, if I lived at the end, I'd wanna be able to cut it.
It's a good point there. This detention pond, to keep from flooding this area that we're looking at right here, does it keep from flooding the other part of Lewis Downs? I know Chip lives in Lewis Downs.
No, no, that, that Lewis Downs goes the, Mike, Mike and I have been reviewing it too, Lewis Downs too, they just got approved and we're doing another Section Three. It goes the, I'm getting my bearings turned around, it goes to the clink, the other side of this subdivision. There's a, there's a tributary that goes through there, and they've got a huge pond they're, they're building in Section Two. This is totally separate. The watershed splits there at the CUD drip area.
That one goes west, this one goes toward the highway.
On the drip area, the CUD's got four Lewis Downs, that area, it breaks there and comes over into this subdivision, if you kinda get your bearings, but this is kind of its own entity. Water goes the other way.
I have a question. If the, if the county has to step in for enforcement of the maintenance. Is our approach gonna be any different with a HOA versus a homeowner? Is our recourse gonna be exactly the same?
I don't.
Josh is here, I saw him come in.
Okay, so that might be a better question for him. I mean, I'll answer to say I don't think fundamentally it would be any different, but Josh can, can speak to that differently, better than I can, I'm sure.
It may be easier.
Question, Josh?
Maybe easier to hold one accountable than twelve.
No. It's a short answer. I think the answer is yes. It would be fundamentally the same, cause either way, you've got an agreement to maintain the easement area. It's just a, a matter of who the defendant is, whether it's the HOA or the individual owner.
Something else to consider though, you know, you're, if you allow this, it becomes a past practice and then, you know, other developers are gonna wanna do this too, so.
The staff's recommendation is HOA.
Correct, we recommend keeping with the regulations. I mean, it, it's not a, an ideal situation with this few homeowners, but it's a legal entity that will continue on.
But you have allowed it.
We have allowed them in the past, as Jamie said, but like I said, that's why I was trying to.
Three, four months ago, three, four months ago.
And that's why I was trying to draw a distinction between what was approved a few months ago and this. I mean, like I said, they're not apples to apples. I mean, that situation was completely different than what they're proposing here.
It, it is, but it's still one, apple to apple, it's still one lot owner still maintaining this one pond.
But the reasoning's different, Jamie.
But the reasoning's different. Doug's exactly right. The reason, but the, the outcome, still one property owner maintaining up the pond for a subdivision.
Jamie, if, uh, if the ten twenty-four inch pipes are not maintained, or if there's a plug, or if you have it partially blocked and you have a tremendous rain event. What implications on flooding?
It'll go over the spill over, if I'm not mistaken, there's a spill over, um, labeled on the detention pond where it spills over. It's a breakover point. Usually they're like six inches lower, something like that. Emergency spillway.
Okay, and so it, does it impede on neighboring property then?
No, it'll go back, it'll go the same way it's going right now, and the pad elevations are set on the, the surrounding lots, you know, a foot or so higher.
This is a tough one. I mean, seriously, this is a tough one, and I can, I can see both sides.
Jamie, does, does this one have an outlet pipe or does it have a spillway type? I, I can't tell from a drawing here. You know what, do you understand what I'm asking?
It's got a, it's just culverts.
Doesn't have culverts in it, that could stop.
Well, if, if the culverts get backed up, a sheet of plywood or something washed down there and blocks all them up, it'll build up into pond and it'll, it'll spill over the emergency spillway, which is six inches, I think it's six inches, something like that, blow up and go the natural way it's going now. And then still the pad, yeah, safety factors in the pads around that, for the homes are set at least a foot or so above that, just the, the dirt around the house. So it'll be, it'll spill out and go over, even if anything fills in.
If I was a, if I was a homeowner in any lot but ten, I would think, oh my God, I, I'm, that's great, I don't have to maintain this pond. I mean, that, the, the dues, I can only guess, the, the, the cost of maintaining a pond over time is not really cheap. You know, heck, a good pond really, what is it, Jamie, six, seven years, you may have to think about dredging up and taking dirt out and increasing your volume, cause it silts in over time.
Yeah, they, yeah, I think the county sees a lot of that.
Supposed to be inspected by an engineer every five years.
Every five years, yeah. I mean, I, I, i- if I lived in Lot Eleven or Lot Nine, I'd be jumping up and down that I would never have to participate financially, um, in the pond, which then leaves us a hundred percent responsibility on the owner of ten. And I can see where, yeah, there's some benefit. If I, if I own this whole property, I could mow it, maintain it, and I'm assuming, Ja- Mike and Jamie, I'll ask you to. Is, does T-deck require them to plant any kind of aquatic specialty vegetation or anything? It can, they can mow it, they don't have to maintain a certain height of.
No.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's ideal that you.
So it's not really a bi- like a bio?
No, sir.
Okay.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, this pond will be dry. Is that, is that not right?
Right, and it, they have, they'll have a, an area, uh, upstream of the culverts that will collect the first inch of run, uh, runoff and try to infiltrate into the ground. But other than that, the heavier storms will build up and go through the culverts.
Okay, will, will it eventually drain dry, or will there always be a little water in it?
No, it's, no, it, it should be dry. It's a dry pond, it's not, shouldn't, should infiltrate.
From a mosquito standpoint, that, that kinda takes that out of.
Yeah, we want it, yeah, we want it to infiltrate out. That's, that's why we didn't push it further back, because it's, it's just rock, if I'm not mistaken, Mike. We looked at that before, that's why we. It'd been nice if we could've pushed it on fo- all the way far in the, far back, but in this case, you couldn't, cause of the soils, it's rotten.
It may be easier to enforce with one person instead of fourteen.
Uh, yeah, it's.
Who enforces this? Do, do y'all enforce it, or does, uh, uh, Mr. Brooks enforce it? Wh- whose office inspects these things?
Well, it'll be up to the, uh, uh, long-term maintenance plan to have a, a.
Independent?
An independent to come out and inspect it every five years, and if we see that it's not being inspected, we have to step in.
Are there, pardon me, are there conditions in the regs where y'all get a copy of that report then every five years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is a random, um, example, but let's say the homeowner of, of Lot Ten files bankruptcy. Who takes care of the pond now?
The owner of Lot Ten.
Mm-hmm.
Bankruptcy, bankruptcy wouldn't prevent him from taking care of it.
But I'm just saying he's gone defunct. We don't know where he is, he's gone. He flew the coop.
Oh, I see. So he's not maintaining it?
Right.
Okay. Well, I mean, it would be the same situation if the homeowners association didn't maintain it either.
I guess I'm just thinking about distributing that responsibility to more than one person.
Well, the, the, you know, there's a legal entity, if there's a homeowners association that's taking care of it, so if that legal entity is defunct or not operating, or the homeowners don't wanna participate, you've got the same situation.
Have the option to not participate?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying that all the time.
No, but what I'm saying is, I thought when there was something for the homeowner to maintain, it, is it an option, Doug?
You can't, you can't opt out of a homeowners.
Typically, when you buy into a subdivision that has one, I mean, that's part of it, when you buy into it, I mean, as I understand it. Now, if it were created after the fact. Then it's an optional thing, as, again, I'm not an expert in HOAs, but I mean, that's my understanding.
I think it's part of the deed restrictions that you're.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, I can speak to that. It wouldn't, it, being a member of the association would not be optional, it would be required, but actually participating in the homeowners association would be optional. You'd have to have a board, you have, you have to have a board of, uh, directors, you have to have people participating in that, actually actively collecting dues, arranging to have somebody come out and maintain the pond. And that's, I think, less likely to happen, especially with a small homeowners association, than it would be an individual who actually owns the land.
JD, if, if, if a bank foreclosed on it, it would be the bank's responsibility as the owner of the property while they had it to, to maintain that, if maintenance was required.
It would be a restriction of the land.
Including, including but not limited to mowing, which is the main thing we wanna get done here, as I understand.
Yeah, the, the bank, what I'm doing, dealing with a lot of subdivisions all over the state that have dealt with that same issue, the banks foreclosed on them, and the counties went back in there and said there's certain issues with ponds and ditches, and then I have to write letters, and then they have to get somebody to come out there and fix those. The bank does.
Homeowners association with nothing to do with this pond, in my opinion, it'll fall apart, and in five years, I won't even remember there was a homeowners association. And I don't know who from Kansas can go out there and twist their arm and make them start back up their homeowners association, so, you know, they, if they had a pool or tennis courts or green area that they were all participating, they're gonna forget this. They're gonna forget all about, you know, it's not anything that'll have a meeting over really every five years, so.
I, I think it's such a small subdivision, it's, I mean, it's, I, I think it's one of those that kinda falls into this exception situation. Again, it goes back to who's gonna maintain it, who's gonna be responsible for maintaining it, and every, everything JD and Jamie brought are valid. I know it's against the regulations, but in this situation, I think it's just, it's, it's small enough that, you're right, it could, it could fall under with the homeowners associa- homeowners association, same deal, so. I think we need to move forward with it. I make a motion to approve, uh, subject to the waivers, uh, at this time.
And what were the waivers again, Doug?
Well, one of them was for the fire hydrant waiver and the requirement of residential.
They'd have to have sprinkles.
Right, and then this issue that we can talk about.
Okay.
Chief, may I make a motion? May I make an amendment to your motion? Pardon me, I'd like to require the developer to put up a, a.
Let's get a second to that.
Oh, okay. All right, now, now are we ready?
Ready.
Make a motion to require the developer to put up a, a, uh, exterior quality sign on a metal post at the corner of each, e- each corner of this pond where whoever buys it, whoever's back there knows not to alter it. Say this is a stormwater retention, uh, do not alter, or something to the, whatever, whatever staff would prefer. And at least they'll be there maybe twenty years, you know?
Well, we, we have seen, uh, buffer signs, so we, we could come up with a sign.
Yeah, and, you know, uh, on the, on the step systems, they have those signs all the way around on the fences, so. So, something exterior grade on a metal pole on the four corners, uh, uh, of the, of the pond. Yeah, do not alter. I don't, I don't know, whatever the staff.
Yeah, we can get.
Whatever staff likes.
I'll second that.
Well, yeah, and, you know, you never wanna assume anything these days, but whoever the potential buyer is, needs to clearly have the legal documents as part of the, the, the legal documents that. Yes, in fact, you are, this is the responsibility you're taking, because I don't think the average Joe is gonna understand the implications here.
Yes, sir. The, the long-term maintenance plan will, will have a step-by-step.
And that needs to be signed, really, that needs to be signed before they even transfer funds.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we get, we, we're gonna take care of it.
Yeah, as far as recourse goes, I, I, the county would be involved, whether it's a single owner or twelve people participating. I'm not sure there's an advantage one way or the other, so.
We've got a.
You've said you've got a motion.
We've got a motion to approve and an amendment to the motion, uh, to add signage. Any discussion on the amendment to the motion? We're gonna vote on that. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, that motion carries. Now we're back to the original motion. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, also, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
No.
We have, uh, uh, one opposed. Make that two. I'm sorry? Item eight B, Blackberry Farm subdivision, the item number is fifteen dash one zero zero one, fifteen lots on thirty-two point three acres, zoned RM, located along the south side of Windrow Road. Linda Gilli is the applicant. Doug?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this property is located along Windrow Road, uh, it's on the south side. The applicant's proposing to develop fifteen lots, fourteen of which will be residential, and then there's one stormwater pond down in this area using conventional septic systems. Uh, staff is aware that there are drainage issues in this area. Uh, Mr. Hughes will discuss that in more detail in just a moment. Uh, we've also asked for input from the fire chief as to whether the fire truck will be able to maneuver around this cul-de-sac. You can see in this area back in here, uh, what they're proposing to do is a large tree, some trees in this, clump of trees in this. So we have asked the applicant to provide, their design engineer to provide a truck turning template. I don't think Mr. Farley's here, at least if he is, I hadn't seen him. Uh, we received that template. It looks to us like, uh, everything should be fine with it. However, we'd like to get confirmation from him prior to, uh, as, as a condition of approval. Uh, besides that.
What, what size truck are you looking at there? I mean, just a.
Forty foot long is a forty foot.
Forty foot, okay, yeah.
Uh, but besides that, the plan was pretty much amended to meet the comments that we had, and I'll let, uh, Mike discuss any of the drainage issues on the property. Several times, um, in the past, Windrow Road has been overtopped by localized flooding, uh, flooding issues in this area are a concern that we've talked with Jamie about. They're gonna establish, uh, pad elevations to have all the houses up above this. Uh, a few of the other issues that we, uh, need him to address. Uh, the cul-de-sac that, uh, Doug was talking about with the clump of trees, um, they're showing that the road will fill about two feet, um, at the end of the cul-de-sac, and we're, uh, just wondering how the trees will survive with two feet of fill over the top of the root system.
Are these existing trees or?
They're trying to preserve, um, so that's something we need to have them address.
Kill them.
They're gonna kill them.
I can use, I could use jump rock and put vines up.
Well, I mean, there's a way around it.
I've seen them fill around trees, but you gotta know what you're doing, say the tree.
Yeah, I mean, you, they could do something to, to, to make it happen, but we haven't seen anything on it yet. Uh, we'll need some additional grading around the detention pond where the pipes come into, uh, the ditches come into the pond and the roadside ditches. Need some additional grading on that, and to show that the water can get out of the pond and through the downstream structures of Windrow Road, with, those need to be evaluated, um, and we need, just need the fi- the final, uh, stormwater and detention counts. But, uh, other than that, it's been pretty decent.
Discussion.
Doug, what is a non-bubble lot?
I'm sorry?
What is a non, what is it, non?
Oh, this is the stormwater pond.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just not for residential structures.
Great. Mr. Chairman, the, uh, maintenance of that island in that cul-de-sac, whose long-term responsibility would that be?
That would have to be the homeowners association.
There is an HOA.
There will have to be for maintenance of that, and also for the stormwater pond, so there'll be a couple of issues that they'll have to.
That same HOA we were talking about a while ago.
The trees in the road are a pretty ideal, but those roots now are gonna be problematic, I would say, with paving and everything out there over the term of time. As long as that's the responsibility of an HOA, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comment.
Second. A motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries, thank you. Item nine, submitted for final plat approval, nine A, Hall Farm subdivision, section one, the item number is fifteen dash two zero zero two, seven lots on twelve point seven seven acres, zoned RL, located off McKee Road. Louis Perry is the applicant. Includes a waiver to the fire hydrant requirements. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the west side of McKee Road. Uh, the preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission at their December eighth, two thousand fourteen meeting, just a little over a month ago. Uh, this final plat is consistent with that preliminary approval. Uh, for this section, what they're doing is they're just subdividing these lots along the existing road. You'll recall, the other section over here was gonna be a new cul-de-sac into this property, and then this area here was just gonna remain as is, maybe tracked off in five acre tracts at some point in the future. Uh, as you stated, uh, they are asking for the fire hydrant waivers. You recall from the preliminary plan discussion, only domestic water can be served, uh, for this property. Therefore, they did ask for the fire hydrant waiver as part of the preliminary approval. They're also asking for it for part of, of this approval as well. Uh, if granted, then they would have to do residential sprinkler systems for these lots as well. Uh, with that. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Mike has any comments regarding this. It appears that our comments that we have have all been addressed.
They have established minimum pad elevations on several lots to handle localized flooding conditions, but other than that, they have addressed all our comments.
Anything changed from last month?
I'm sorry?
Anything changed from when we looked at?
No, sir, I don't believe so.
Make a motion to approve.
I'd like to just announce that I have a potential conflict on this, and I will not participate in discussion about it.
If I can clarify your motion, Mr. Lynch, that was with the waiver as well, okay?
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second.
I have a question for Doug. Doug, I have a question. On these, where we're, and I know we've had this discussion before, and I want to clarify where we are. On these, where we put in the fire hydrant waiver because there's not sufficient flow to, are we requiring them to stub in a, you know, leave a joint in the pipe underground where they could go back? If at some point in the future the water flow improves, either through volume or pressure, whichever the problem is.
That would be an issue with CUD and their water line design.
I know we've discussed that in the past.
We have discussed it in the past, and I don't remember exactly where we are.
Jennifer.
Hello, Jennifer Wood from CUD. For this particular development, it is what is called in our Holly Grove Pressure Zone, it's served by a really small pump station. And so, for this particular development, I don't even know when there would be anything done out there to allow fire hydrants. You're talking less than a hundred gallons a minute pump that serves that area, which was, when we talked to Mr. Perry, that was our conversations about the fire hydrant versus the fire sprinkler. We have talked about that in the past. The issue comes up with who pays for those fire hydrants in the future, as far as that. It's something that wouldn't be a big deal to incorporate in the design, to have a T there and stub up for a hydrant.
I was asking, I think trying to figure out who pays for it in the future, it just might get easier on everyone.
Right, that's always been the issue is, who pays for it once that does come there? That's kind of been where we left that conversation in the past, because we don't do bonds or sureties or anything like that, and so.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna get into that, for sure.
Right, so, yeah.
I was just curious, because we had discussed it in the past.
Any other comments? We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Item nine B, Spring House, section four, the item number is fifteen dash two zero zero three. Nineteen lots on eight point four acres, zoned RM, located off of Shores Road. Spring House Development LLC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the south side of Shores Road. The preliminary plat for this development was approved by the planning commission back in February of two thousand seven, and then re-approved back in August of two thousand twelve. As I recall, there were some road realignments that had to be taken into consideration at that point. But this final plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. Most of the comments, pretty much all the comments staff had have been met. CUD did have one comment that they did get back to us on that says that they will not sign off on the final plat until the water line and entry is in service. So, that's something that they'll have to, to work toward before getting final approval from Consolidated Utility District. But other than that, everything else appears to be in order with this plat.
Questions or comments?
Doug, I have a question. The sand filter's already existing on lot one fifty, is that true?
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
So, this is just an extension of a already existing sand filter drip fill.
That's correct.
A motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion carries, thank you. Item ten, submitted for site plan approval. Item ten A, Life Point Church addition, the item number is fifteen dash three zero zero three. New construction of approximately three thousand eight hundred and forty square feet on eighty-two point four six acres, zoned RM, located at fifty-one hundred Ammerville Road, First Baptist Church of Smyrna. DBA Life Point Church is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Ammerville Road, it's on the west side. What the applicants are proposing to do, you can see there's existing church on the property. There's a couple of structures here in the back that they're removing, and they're making this addition here. Now, typically with additions, if they're under three thousand square feet, we're able to do those administratively, but this was just a little bit larger than that, so that's why you're seeing this brought to you today. The use of the property is for educational space, children's education. As far as the plan itself is concerned, the plan's actually in pretty good shape. There are a few things that we do have asked the applicant to do. They have addressed most of our comments, there's still a few things that are outstanding. One of those is they've labeled the purpose of the addition on the response sheet, but it needs to be on the site plan. We also need to verify whether or not this right-of-way was dedicated. You can see a little further down here that there was a little right-of-way dedication, additional ten feet of right-of-way required by the Rutherford County Planning Commission back when this was originally done. I believe it was two thousand four, two thousand three. But we need to make sure that this actually has been dedicated to the county for any future road improvements. Also, they've given us kind of an op, an estimate for the cost. We need to make sure, I need more information about that, just to make sure that the whole property doesn't have to be brought up to landscape standards. So, a little more information on that would be good. And also, I'll let Mike handle this, but a little more information about drainage around the building itself. And then, of course, they'll have to work with codes and make sure that the ingress egress points have been handled adequately. They're proposing two, I believe, one here and one in this area, but they're really close to each other. They're also having to move these propane tanks. You can see they're right here, but they're having to move them over here for distance requirements. But besides that, the plan itself is, has been amended for the most part to what we asked them to do, but we, we still have those few items outstanding, but I'll let Mike handle the drainage.
On, on the drainage for this, they're setting a spot shot of five eighty-one point five. We need to see proposed contours of how this drainage is gonna work and tying into the existing swells on either side of the parking lot. Because there's a five eighty-two at the edge of the, the parking lot, so essentially that, that starting elevation is lower than the parking lot elevation. So, we need to see how they're gonna drain around, and it can be done, it just, we just need to see the proposed contours on the plan.
Doug, there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions here that, that need to be answered. If, if we make a motion to approve it, which, subject to all those, did you rather get all those answered, bring it back, and then us approve it, or?
Well, I, I think the comments that are here, I mean, a couple of them really are more just, you know, a couple of them are really just showing a couple of things on the plan. I don't think those are big issues. The, the question of the right-of-way, I think, can be, can be answered. If it has, everything's fine. If it hasn't, they just need to drop some documentation to, you know, dedicate that right-of-way to the, the planning commission. The ingress egress point, again, that's something that they can work with, with David Jones with when they, they'll have to submit their architectural designs for this building anyway. That's something he'll be looking at, so I mean, if it's not, I mean, that's something I think we can, we can work with. So, I don't, there's nothing on here, you know, and Mike can correct me if I'm wrong.
Nothing earth-shattering. I mean, it just, they need to show the proposed grades.
Right.
That's, that's about it for me.
Are you okay with all their comments, any?
Yes, I mean, Jarell, Huddles, and Steele, sure, these are minor, and we can address those, we submit bonus to the code, the engineering and building, no problem.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Subject to all.
Subject to staff.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Other discussion, please. Motion to approve, item number fifteen dash three zero zero three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Item eleven, staff reports. Doug, you wanna take over?
Yeah, yes, sir, I appreciate it. I know we've got these in a certain order right here, but after looking at the order, I think it would make more sense to kind of knock out some of the quicker items up front here and then get some of the ones that may take just, just a little longer. On your desk, you've got a couple of things before you. I'm just gonna go over real quickly. You've got two, you've got the subdivision report for two thousand fourteen. This really just kind of give you an overview as to the activity that the planning commission considered over the last year. I'll turn your attention really more to the second page. You can see that the subdivisions with four or more lots is typically how we've done that in the past. Now, our definitions have changed, minor versus major, we're still kind of grappling with that a little bit. But to be consistent, you can see we've kind of kept the, the way we track those the same. But you can see, you know, kind of back in the heyday, you know, back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, when things really were, were moving pretty well. Of course, then you can see in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when things really dropped off pretty dramatically through two thousand eleven. Since two thousand eleven, you can see we've actually been making a pretty, pretty strong comeback over the last couple of years, but you can definitely see a difference between last year, two thousand thirteen, where there was only a hundred and sixty-one lots recorded in larger subdivisions, and this past year where we saw three hundred and fifty, that's over a hundred percent increase. So, we are seeing a lot more activity here than we have in previous years.
Doug, do you know how many building permits were pulled in subdivisions in the county last year?
David probably has a better idea for that.
That's total, that could be on five acre tracts, but most of those will be in, in a subdivision, probably. We're, we're running, still running under the number that we're utilizing, is my point.
Right. Now, when you look at the available lot inventory that we track from month to month, you know, back when it was, when the recession was really at its peak, we had, and this is just the unincorporated county, we had over sixteen hundred lots that were recorded on the ground, ready for building permits, that were just basically sitting there. They were ready, just nobody was pulling building permits. Since that time, that number has gone down to about eight hundred or so, eight to nine hundred, so, and that trend has consistently gone down. Now, it does waiver a little bit for month to month, just depending if new subdivisions are recorded and different things like that. But we have seen quite a dramatic decrease in that over the last several years. So, that's really just for your information, I just wanted to pass that along. If you look this over and you have questions, you know, feel free to give staff a call on that.
Real brief, just wanted to talk about the work schedule and the, from last year to this year, that's what this document looks like. You'll notice in here that we do a project update, some of the things that we accomplished over the last year, you know, updating our Board of Zoning Appeal bylaws, several zoning ordinance amendments for daycares and accessory uses for community assembly uses, entertainment and amusement services, you know, we separated that from indoor, just one wave to indoor versus outdoor. We're still looking at the possibility of doing some shooting ranges and things like that, but that's, that's something to, to consider at another time. Also, we made general amendments to our subdivision regulations. You'll recall earlier, or later last year, really, we came with a, a number of amendments to our subdivision regulations, as well as some ordinance amendments considering, or dealing with the International Building Code and the Fire Code. Some of the things that we'd like to work on in two thousand fifteen, of course, we're still working through the Metropolitan Planning Organization out of Nashville, the Southeast Area Transportation and Land Use Study, which is a partnership between ourselves and the, the rest of the municipalities in Rutherford County to develop a regional transportation plan, and those recommendations would help guide the development of a new plan for the county, which the last one was really adopted back in oh four. Still want to update our planning commission bylaws. There are a number of things we do think need to be changed. Some zoning ordinance amendments, we have passed out some amendments regarding rural retreats, we'll talk about that in just a moment. Homeless shelters is something we would like to talk to about. We have started receiving some inquiries into that. We've already received a, a number of sources that we can use to help craft some regulations for that, so that'll be something you'll see over the next several months. Also, looking at some changes to the borrow pit regulations, which is something that basically is more of temporary resource extraction kind of a thing. That's what we're really looking at there. We do know we had to make some amendments to the subdivision regulations. I alluded to earlier, the state law that changed. We'll have to make some changes to help reflect that. Our engineering staff has also identified some amendments that need to be made in conflicting information on road section requirements. Did you want to talk any about that?
Just in the, the text and the construction details, don't, don't jive, so we're gonna update those, and we're gonna enhance and add some additional construction details.
And then finally, that last thing you see on there about the traffic sheds, you know, we've had a couple of presentations from Steve Tocknell and Mike Madison. Mike's with the Williamson County Planning Department, he's my counterpart really at Williamson County. We've, Jeff Phillips, myself, Mayor Burgess, and, and Mike have met with, and discussed this, this idea a little further. What we're, what we've requested Mr. Tocknell to do at this point, and you'll see that you've got a little, kind of like a time schedule on your property, or on your, on your tables, it look like, looks like this, kind of like a general timeline. What we've asked him to do is to just kind of analyze the unincorporate areas of the county to determine whether or not traffic sheds make sense in Rutherford County. This is something, it's, it's only take him about, about five to six months or so to do. We actually, he had a little smaller timeframe than this, but we asked him to beef up the key stakeholders aspect of that. Jeff, I'll let you speak to this in just a moment if you've got any questions or comments you want to make, rather. But I just want to make sure everybody is clear that at this point, all we're really asking for is that if anybody has any fundamental issues with him, just looking into it. This would not create a plan, we would not be voting to create any traffic sheds at this point. This is really just looking at it and saying, does it make sense, does it not? If it does make sense, after the analysis is completed, at that point, we would sit back down and say, okay, how do we want to proceed with this? So, that's really all we're doing, proposing, proposing to do at this point, and, and Mike, Jeff, I'll leave it up to you, back to you if you guys have any further comments or anything you'd like to make on that.
No further comments. This is following the directions that the planning commission gave the staff several months ago to go forward with it, look into it, talk to the mayor about it, all that's been done. Mayor has some discretionary funding at his disposal, and he's agreed to pay for this, so. It's, it's just a, an opportunity for us to look at a different tool that we may need in the future as we're going forward and, and facing some of the obstacles that this county will face as it grows and grows and grows into the future. So, the preliminary study is very important, and, and we also ask Doug to make sure that, Tocknell, is that how you pronounce his name?
Tocknell, yes, sir.
Tocknell drug his feet a little bit and didn't rush through this thing, that we wanted a, a good survey done and a thorough survey, and it, let it be well communicated throughout the community, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
How much money was the preliminary analysis?
Eighty?
It was, it was under ten thousand. It was, I mean, just the preliminary, it was under ten thousand dollars.
Eight thousand bucks or something like that?
Nine ninety-seven, something like that, yeah. The only other thing I wanted to talk about before we get into the, the other couple items, and this wasn't on the agenda, but I did pass out some possible regulations for retreats. You'll see this on your tables. This is one of the items we have put in our work program for the year. What we're trying to do here, we have been receiving several inquiries over the last months regarding wedding venues, you know, on rural property. People like to use, you know, the, the rural settings, existing barns, those kind of things for wedding venues. It's not something we're just seeing. I mean, this is something, you know, I know my counterparts in Williamson County, they've called and talked to me about it. Nationally, this is becoming more of a trend, apparently, and it's really showing in Rutherford County as well. There are some that are existing that have gone through the approval process. But that being said, when we crafted our new ordinance that took effect in two thousand thirteen, we addressed them mostly as agritourism type activities, because it seemed a lot of them were happening on existing farms that had farm structures and those kind of things. But what we're really starting to see is that people are looking to put these type facilities really on tracts of land that are not even working farms at that point. So, it doesn't really make any sense to zone them agricultural to allow them to do these type of uses when there's really no agricultural activity going on, on the property. So, what we've proposed to do is come up with a set of regulations, and actually, some of the language in here actually does mirror Williamson County's pretty closely, because they did have some, some language on this. But we've also looked at some others around the state and country for that matter. What we'd propose to classify these as are minimum impact facilities. That would permit them only by special exception in all the zones, with the exception of the mobile home park zone and the industrial zones. So, they would not be permitted in those three zones, but they'd be permitted by special exception, meaning they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for all the other zones that are there. You'll see that we define what a retreat is, a facility owned, operated by a non-governmental entity for the purpose of providing a rural setting in which temporary lodging, camping, conferences, meeting, event facilities are provided with or without compensation. So, while we're looking to address mostly the wedding venue, we didn't want to just limit it to that. We figured somebody wanted to come in there and do some sort of like a weekend retreat separate from a wedding facility or something like that, then it could fall into these definitions as well. But we wanted to be clear that we were not allowing any other temporary use permit, like outdoor performances or seasonal attractions, in with that definition, so you see we specifically excluded them from that. Excuse me. You'll see that the first item. You'll see that the first item there talks about retreats. A concept plan has to be submitted, along with the application, along with all these factors here that you see, these different criteria. These are the things that we expect to see on the front end. And then we have the following standards, minimum acreage of 10 acres. Parcels would have to have an unobstructed frontage along a public road. We would not allow private easements. They'd have to have actual road frontage. They would have to have site plan approval consistent with the zoning ordinance. We do propose a maximum floor area in all areas used in connection with the retreat, excluding areas for overnight accommodations like campgrounds or something like that, but no greater than 20,000 square feet. That's, we have not seen any venues at this point that are that large, so that, that should, I don't think that's going to be a hindrance for anything. They can have certain accessory uses, like banquet facilities, recreational amenities, not open to general public. As far as parking is concerned, we do propose a parking requirement on the bottom of the back of that page for one space for every three people at maximum capacity of the main assembly room, or plus one space, excuse me, plus one space for every guest room or campsite. However, we would not necessarily require them to be paved, but they would have to get approval from staff. You know, if they wanted to gravel it, leave it grass, whatever. If we couldn't come to an agreement, then the Board of Zoning Appeals would have the ability to condition the type of material. On top of that, handicap parking would have to be a hard dustless surface and meet all other ADA, American Disabilities Act standards. We do provide a maximum length of stay for any guests, to 14 consecutive days. That's similar to what we require for bed and breakfasts as well, so we want to be consistent with that. Rather than require screening on a uniform basis, we let the BZA condition approval. A lot of these rural settings may have existing tree lines, just really heavily treat areas. Wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to require them to have anything. But we thought the BZA would be in a better position to, after staff review, to say, okay, yes, they have to have more screening than is already out there, so we left that up to them. Our performance standards, we would, as far as lighting and sound and those kind of things, would have to, these events would have to conform to that. Signage, again, would have to conform to the ordinance. And this is some, these next couple standards, especially this one here, this is one of the issues that we typically see, is a lot of these, I think a lot of people, when they come in, they think they can just go ahead and start having events in existing barns, and they don't think about what kind of improvements may have to be made to be brought up to current codes, as far as the building code, the fire code are concerned. So, we explicitly put that in there, that any proposed and existing structures to be used in connection with it have to comply with the adopted building and fire codes for Rutherford County and shall be inspected prior to occupancy. All regulations enforced through other agency, be they federal, state, or other, would have to be met. And again, these would be included to, not limited to, rather, building codes, fire codes, health department, groundwater, as far as septic tank needs and whatnot. If the retreat's proposed on property with existing structures or residence, they may, we may have to issue an additional address for 911 purposes. And then we also keep some setbacks there, additional setbacks to what's normally required. All buildings, activities, parking have to be at least 100 feet back from all property lines. So, that's just kind of an overview. I kind of wanted to present it to you, just for, kind of get your initial take on it. If you're comfortable with this, we can go ahead and schedule it for public hearing at the February night meeting. We just have one item for rezoning, which I don't think is going to take very long, so we would have ample time to have this on the agenda. But I'll be happy to answer any questions. I kind of flew through that, and I apologize. It's a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to talk one.
Doug, I think one thing was related to agribusiness, a lot of these are old barns and things that they do use. I have a little problem with, if, if we're saying a minimum acreage of 10 acres, if that's a perfect square block of 10 acres, if my math, as Mike always says, you're eating up about, for 100 foot setback, you're eating up about three acres. Lot of these, a lot of these lots are in a rural setting where there's trees here, and, and the lot cannot configure to 100 foot from both sides will eat up the whole lot. So, I think 10 acres is too much. I think 100 foot setback is too much. Those are the two, the things that really jumped out at me on, on this, so I don't know if we'll be ready in one month. There's a lot, there's a lot of them in the county. There's a lot of them I hadn't seen in the county, a lot of them I have seen in the county. I, I, I think we're overkilling it here a little bit.
So, you want us to reduce that maybe to five acres or something like that?
I think, yeah, at least, and, and, and the setback, some of the, some of these old barns are even closer to, to the side of the road than, than the 100 foot. 100 foot's a long way. 100 foot's a long way. You know, we can, a lot of these things we look at, and I know I've been guilty of it all the time, but I've been on this planning commission. Things come to us and they, and they don't hit me, and I don't, so I don't really understand it until it gets back. And then, then we come up here with these wanting, wanting special exceptions and, and, and want to change it a little bit, so I don't, I don't know for one month's.
Right, and something else to consider, and I understand where you're going with it, from the agricultural standpoint. If it's a, if it's a bona fide agricultural use, they wouldn't necessarily fall into this, because this, what we're envisioning this is those outside of the agricultural. You know, if somebody has a working farm and they want to convert a barn, of course, they'll still have to meet, you know, building codes, fire codes, and all that. But from a use standpoint, I think they would still fall under the agricultural side of things in our ordinance. You know, that falls under the entertainment, you know, the state law changes that were made within the last couple of years. You know, there's probably not a whole lot we can do about that. These particular facilities, what we're aiming toward, I guess, for lack of a better word, are those where somebody finds 10 acres of land, they're just sitting there, not being actively farmed, they're not doing anything, they're just there, and somebody wants to buy it, and they either want to use an existing structure, or they want to build their own, and then start having these type of events. That's really what we're going for with this.
Yeah, and, and that's another one of those hard calls.
But I mean, we'll be more than happy to take a look into that. Actually, some of the ordinances we looked at, the minimum acreage is actually higher than that. They were 20 acres. So, I mean, we actually cut down some, but I mean.
Williamson County.
Yeah, and the buffer zones were, you know, two, three, 200, 300 feet, some of them.
That's, that's a lot. That's a lot.
Well, that's just to protect the surrounding homeowners or property owners from the large venue. The crowds will come to these, just to kind of keep the, the noise and the, the parking right up against the property line.
I mean, we can take a look at some of these things. I mean, does anybody else have any other comments that they want to make on these?
I think, Doug, my concern is something that we've seen before when, is, for instance, somebody's having a wedding reception, and grandmothers are there and that sort of thing, and there's dancing and partying going on. Concerned about being able to get ambulances in and out of that without being obstructed by the parking, they, they need to get in quickly, too. I mean, is, is that addressed in here and, and the traffic management and parking plan?
We, we would see this on the site plan, first on the concept plan, and then on the site plan, where they're going to park, where the access will be, handicap parking. That would be addressed in, in the site plan review.
It doesn't specifically say that, but I mean, I agree with my idea. It would, we would take a look at that.
I don't want to see them cutting across the, having to cut across the field to get through the traffic, because it's part of the smash or whatever.
And I think that's one of the concerns, too, I have with how large do you allow the site to be? You know, if we allow, five acres may work, but depending on the size of facility that they want to build, you know, that's going to make an impact on how much parking they're going to have to provide. And if, you know, the whole property's pretty much taken up by parking, are they going to start having parking along the access road, and then maybe into the right of way, which obviously we don't want to see? So, I think that was another, one of the reasons why we're looking at maybe 10 versus five acres. But that's, you know, that's just one of the reasons we looked at that. Regardless, we, we need to do something, because I don't think this is a trend that's going to stop anytime soon. It seems, based on the things we've seen, we've seen articles in the newspaper, you know, national newspapers about this, that it's, apparently, this is the new thing, new trend, you know, with church weddings, you know, losing their, I don't know if appeal's the right word, but you know, just the costs and everything associated with them, you know, people are looking other directions. So, this is something I think we'll be dealing with for, for some time.
Everyone comfortable with bringing a proposal in a public hearing at our February 6 p.m. meeting?
And we can discuss those issues, Mr. Lynch, that you had, you know, at that point, too. We'll, we'll do a little research in between now and then, you know, and maybe do some schematics, kind of show what setbacks would look like on certain tracts of land. You know, how much land would have to be reserved for setbacks and things like that on different sizes of land. We'll, we'll see what we can do for that. Okay, those are all the other items I think I had, so at this point, I guess we can go ahead with items A and C. Okay, Mr. Aaron Poole, I guess he's still here. Yes, sir, he is. He had asked, he lives, well, he's got some property in Crescent Ridge, Lot 54. He had asked to address the Planning Commission on a specific item, so he made his request, and we went ahead and put him on the agenda for other business. So, with that, I guess, Mr. Poole, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Doug. I have some handouts I'd pass around and give you a little. We purchased Lot 54 in Ridgeview at Crescent Ridge somewhere around a year and a half, two years ago, for the purpose of building our retirement home on. And what we have discovered is that the lot was never constructed to the specifications that the developer agreed to. And we've had a lot of back and forth with the developers, and right now, we're at a stalemate. If you have the, if you'll turn to the first long page that has a drawing of the lot on it, it's a pie-shaped lot with the 218-foot frontage. And you'll notice a heavy bold line diagonally across it that says 652 feet. That is the proposed elevation after the lot has been graded properly. To the back of that line, you'll see another lighter line that is indicated at 650 feet. And that is the original elevation of the lot. So, basically, we're missing two feet of dirt. Our house is under construction. This is one of the two lots in this subdivision that have a minimum pad elevation, and that is noted on here at 652 feet. And I don't think it's the buyer's responsibility to finish providing the facilities that the developer proposed and agreed to in the development of his subdivision. So, I've had several conversations with Eric Hill. I've had a couple of conversations with Mike Hughes. And their position seems to be that they have no authority to insist that the developer do what he was supposed to do in developing this individual lot. That at one time, Mr. Hill told me, he said, he said, "Aaron," he said, "I don't have any authority. I don't have any leverage." He said, "I won't have any until they ask us to take over the roads." He said, "Then I have something that I can kind of hold over their heads." And I don't know that I agree with that at this point. It was acceptable at that time. Part of the problem is aggravated by Lot 53, which is to the west of our lot. There's been a home constructed on that lot. And when they graded, did the final grading on that lot, they didn't grade it according to what they were supposed to. On the plat, it says that every contractor will grade his lot to provide flow into the drainage system. Well, if you, if you had what I have, which is this, the final plat, or the drainage plan, this is my lot. This is the retention pond, and this is a hill here. So, the water comes off the hill, when it was, undisturbed land, came off the hill and flowed across this way. And they put in a drainage ditch at the back of these three lots, and according to Jamie, because Jamie and I have had some discussions about this, this lot is supposed to take all the flow off of this hill. And then if you look at the elevations closely, you find that these three lots flow from a high point at the berm at the ditch to the side, there's a ditch here, and it also flows over the curb into the street, which will allow that water to go into the retention pond. My lot being two foot lower in some places than it's supposed to be, when they built this lot up and actually dammed the natural flow by putting a ridge through the center of the lot, their west side of the lot flows into the ditch, their east side of their lot flows onto my lot, and we had a pond. And there's a page that has some pictures on it. We had a pond that was so deep and so prevalent that we started growing cattails in it. And the water stood there for so long that it rotted the quince and cherry trees that my neighbor had planted along the property line out twice. And he got upset about it and went to the developer. And I guess they came up to planning or engineering, and they put a, a plan together. Met with Bob Reed out at the, the lot one day, and he said, "Well, we're going to let them put a two-by-two foot culvert in on the front of your lot, about six inches down from the top of the curb, and that should take care of the water." Well, what I ended up with was a two-by-two foot culvert, 24 inches below grade. And then they had the audacity to dig a ditch across my lot to where the water was pounding. I don't know what that is in your mind, but in my mind, that's criminal trespass. They had no permission to come on my property and dig a ditch. And you can see by the pictures that when they did it, they didn't even leave it in a condition that I could mow it. I went out and bought a new zero-turn mower to maintain this lot for my neighbors, because I knew that we weren't going to build on it right away. And I didn't want to be that neighbor that didn't maintain his lot. And for them to come out and, and do things on my lot without my permission is just trespassing. So, when I went out and found the two-foot-deep hole I have that I can't mow, I have to weed eat it, and a ditch that I can't mow, because of all the rocks and debris that they left over there. I mean, I've spent untold hours cleaning this lot and prepping it for our house, and end up with a situation that's intolerable. So, I had a contractor friend of mine that had a transit, and we went out and we shot some elevations along what is supposed to be 652 feet above sea level. And those are the small numbers that you see noted there. And I'm not an expert at surveying, but it's, it's pretty basic. You start out with a benchmark, and there's a benchmark now on both curbs, on the two front corners of the lot. The uphill is at 652 feet, and the one at the bottom is at 651. So, there's plenty of fall in the curb to be able to take the flow that's in the street. With a minimum pad of 652 required on my house, we're going to raise that to 652 and a half. In fact, we've already poured the garage floor at 652 and a half. So, when I come out of the garage, I can use the driveway as a drain, a spillway out into the street, and we'll have six inches of fall in about 80 feet, which will take care of the water coming off the upper part of the hill. But I still am left with a lot that somebody's going to have to put in two feet of fill. And it should have been taken care of by the developer. And the last two pages, or actually, the two after the, the site drawing, is the most recent email that I sent to the developers, asking for us to sit down and have a plan so I can get my, my lot filled up to what they said they were going to do in the first place. The second, the next page is the response from Mr. Morris, says, "Mr. Poole bought the lot as is." Well, as is to me is what's on this sheet of paper. This is what this commission approved. This is what Mr. Morris agreed to do, and he hasn't done it, and he's unwilling to do it. So, when I talked to Eric, and he says, "I don't have any authority," and I talked to Mike, and Mike says about the same thing, I was okay with that, because at least we had a little plan. So, and I understand we've done some, some improvements in the subdivision regulations. Unfortunately, those improvements don't help my situation. I think one of the best improvements they've made is that when it. when a subdivision, Mike, you tell me if I'm wrong, if a subdivision is developed, before the developer can sell lots in a new subdivision now, they have to have it surveyed and certify that they have met all the design requirements that they submitted and approved and agreed to.
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
As-built.
As-built. Okay. So, in Mr. Morris's letter, or email back to me, he says, "I bought the lot as-built." Well, I have a problem with that, because it wasn't built according to what he agreed to. His tone is that I'm SOL, that the county approved it, they've accepted it, which they haven't, to my knowledge, because we still don't have the second coat of paving on the streets. So, there's still a bond out there. I went back and dug out the subdivision rules for the time period that was in effect when the subdivision was developed, and you might be able to see some highlights on it. This final plat was recorded on February the 14th of '11, so it falls under the 2004 subdivision rules. It says, "The required improvements are as follows. Second line item is grading." So, grading is one of the facilities that they have to provide according to their plan, the way that I read this. If you come down to Section B on Page 21, "All required improvements have been constructed in a satisfactory manner and approved by the county engineer." Well, I don't know that Eric Hill ever approved it all. I don't know that they've asked him to approve it all, because they sure haven't paved it, and they haven't asked for the county to adopt the roads that are in it. I can tell you this, that according to their drainage plan, there is riprap supposed to be in the drainage ditches. There is something called North American Green, which is a
Erosion matting.
Erosion pad that they put down. I mean, anybody in this room can walk out there and walk up and down the ditches and in the retention pond and see there's no riprap and there's no North American Green in any of the positions that they say they're going to put in there. The sad part about it is, is they've now asked for the HOA to be formed, and we've gotten a letter from Mr. Caius saying that they've selected a management company, and all thereafter is their money. We don't have a budget. We don't have the roads finished. The water out of the roads can't get into the retention pond because the drain grades are too high. We don't have the riprap, we don't have the erosion control, and they're asking us to take over the maintenance, just like you folks discussed in the first project today. They're wanting us to take over the maintenance of two retention ponds that aren't built the way they're designed. And, you know, the consensus of opinion among the neighbors is, we're not ready. We're taking over a problem, and we don't want to take over a problem. Now, I went back, and I started digging and looking, and I had found a solution. I didn't just bring you a problem today. On Page 22, there is "Final Inspection for As-Built Subdivisions," which is what Mr. Morris's email says. It's an as-built subdivision. I bought it as-built. Well, he didn't finish it, so it's not as-built. County hasn't accepted it, so it's not as-built. So, according to what I'm reading here, is there's supposed to be a bond out there somewhere, and there's supposed to be a line of credit open at a bank that the county can draw from to correct the deficiencies in what the developer has done, or not done, in this case. Says, "When facilities are not constructed according to approved plans and specs, Rutherford County has the explicit authority to require compliance." I'm asking for this commission to enforce that regulation. It says, "The planning commission shall not issue written releases of the surety posted until Rutherford County Road Board has accepted the street and the as-built subdivision has been approved by the county engineer." It hasn't been approved by a county engineer, so the bond should still be in place. The next line, "Upon recommendations of the county engineer or his representative..." Mike, I'm standing here today to ask you, to give you the explicit, for the commission to give you the explicit authority to enforce and to call any and all funds necessary to complete the required improvements, which includes the filling and grading of my lot, as per your subdivision rules and regulations. And now, I'll answer any questions y'all have.
Was this elevation, was this dirt taken off and used in another lot somewhere, or was it just never there?
It was never there. I was told by one of David's guys that, and if I go back just a minute to this, "I bought the lot as-is," I didn't. Because when we agreed to buy it and made the offer on it, there were burn piles on it, there were trash piles on it. There was a huge trash pile from the debris from constructing on Lot 53, and part of our contract was that they would come in and they would clean all that up, because I should have a lot that's ready to go. It wasn't really ready for sale. I kind of talked them out of having to let them build the house by paying them a $10,000 premium for the lot. So, it wasn't an "as-is." It was, I bought a lot with these improvements in addition to what was approved here. Because then, if you go to the website for county planning and engineering, one of their recommendations is that we come, you come down here if you're going to buy a lot, and you pull a final plat, so you know what you're buying. And I did that. I live in Valley View, not two blocks away from this lot. And I've watched this lot for probably, actually, I almost bought part of Valley View when they headed up for sale for tracks. So, we have watched this lot go through the processes. You made an interesting comment, that every five years, you have to have an engineer come out and certify the retention pond. That retention pond is probably six years old, seven years old. So, you might want to have it, you know, reevaluated, because it's filled in. We had a problem with the water coming off the hill, jumping the ditch at the back of my lot, flowing across my lot, and ponding and not being able to get out. Now, the two-foot culvert temporarily solved the problem my neighbor has with his trees dying. But if you look at the pictures, even what they did, the ditch they dug across the lot doesn't drain all the water. And when they figured that out, when Eric and I were out at the lot looking at this culvert, he picked up the phone and he called David Alcorn. And he said, "David," he said, "I'm out here with Mr. Poole looking at this." And he says, "This is exactly why we put the new regulations in place, because this is the situation that we had come across when the lots aren't certified by the contractor to meet the requirements or the specifications that you people are submitting." And he said, "You need to get together, Mr. Poole, and figure out something." The next day, I got an email from David, and he said, "We need to get together and have a meeting." And within a week, I had loads upon loads of clay dumped on my lot where the water was. No meeting, just bring it in, dump it, spread it out, you know. Nobody will care about it. We're doing what we think we need to, but that's not what I wanted done. And I got hot about it and fired an email back to them and told them, "You come get your dirt, or we're going to court, and I'll have you arrested for criminal trespass." The dirt disappeared. They took it over to a lot behind me and used it as topsoil. And I'll tell you, I took it down to the co-op. It's clay. It's same kind of fill they put in the center of my lot where my house is, and threw grass seed on it. I spent $150 on grass seed and straw in four hours with an aerator trying to get it to where it would grow. Nothing will grow in it. So, I'm frustrated about it. I'm not unhappy with Mike or with Doug. They're doing as much as they can. And I tend to be a student. When I have a problem, I go research it, and I find an answer. And like I said, I just didn't bring you a problem. I found you an answer. It's in the regulations that were in effect when this subdivision was approved. And once again, all I'm doing is asking you to enforce what the regulations are. And it's a lot easier for me to do it this way than to take everybody into court and sue everybody. Because there is a means to accomplish the goal without having to do that, and you folks are the key. Anything else?
Mr. Poole, I have a question.
Sure.
What a horrible predicament you're in. Let me ask you to clarify some verbiage that you
Absolutely.
When you, I heard, and you tell me if I'm at mistake here, I heard you bought the property under the condition "as-is."
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. Well, clarify that for me.
No, Mr. Morris says, "I bought the property under the condition 'as-is.'"
So, you have a legal document, a bill of sale, that clearly
I have a legal document, and if you read your subdivision rules and regulations, this becomes part of the property.
I understand, but what I'm trying to find, what I'm trying to drill down to is, if verbiage says you bought the lot "as-is," it's not as it was supposed to be. You bought it "as-is." That's where I'm trying to find out.
I don't know that there's an "as-is" clause in the sales contract.
Well, that needs to be, you need to know that. That needs to be revealed.
So, let me ask you a question. What you're saying is, if a contractor comes in here and says, "I want to build a subdivision," and I cheat, and I don't do it right, and I sell it "as-is," that relieves the county of all responsibility for seeing this done the way that they proposed it. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that. I just want to make sure, much like you buy a car "as-is."
Right.
You said you were a student and did due diligence. I'm just making sure you didn't get yourself in a crack by buying a piece of property "as-is."
This is part of the "as-is."
Not necessarily. That's as it's supposed to be, not necessarily "as-is."
Then why, on the county commission website, does it say, "Come down here and get a plat, so you know what you're buying?"
You did, you stated you did come down, right?
I did.
And you pulled a plat.
I did.
And you looked at the elevations, right?
I looked at the elevations on here.
As what they agreed to by the developer and the county, right?
And I was happy that if it was built this way, my lot would drain.
Right, I understand.
And it did when I bought the house.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to find
Bought the lot.
I'm just trying to find that point in time, because I'm not an attorney. I'm just asking the question.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the "as-is" purchase. If I buy a car "as-is," that's "as-is."
I understand that. I'm not buying a used car.
I understand. But if you bought a lot that, in the condition it was at, you accepted those conditions, even though they did not meet the requirements as on the plat, I'm just wondering if there's, if that's the gray area that you're having so much trouble with getting an answer.
Now, I'm having a gray area, okay, with a developer not doing what he promised the commission he was going to do.
I understand that. That is an issue, for sure, that we're going to talk about.
And all I'm asking you to do is to correct that issue.
I understand. And again, I'm not making myself clear.
It has nothing to do with whether I bought a lot "as-is."
I think it does. But again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I think it does. If you buy anything "as-is," you are accepting that "as-is," not as promised, as substandard. It's
Okay, so what you're telling
I can get a deal on this property, because it needs some work, so I'm buying it "as-is."
I didn't get a deal on the property.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying is, if you take it "as-is," then really, your responsibility is from that point forward. If you need to add two feet to make it degrade, you accepted that responsibility if you, if you purchased it "as-is." And that's all I'm trying to find out, is if the language in your contract, whether you knew it or didn't know it, is taking possession of that property "as-is."
I understand your point.
That's a, that's a, that's a court argument right there.
I understand your point.
And I'm just trying to make sure
I don't know that there was an "as-is" clause in the purchase contract, okay?
We want, we want to help you. I want to help you.
Well, that's fine. Enforce what he agreed to. That's all I'm asking you to do.
I understand, but I'm just trying to find out
It doesn't excuse his inaction on doing what he said he would do.
That's correct, but
And it doesn't excuse his inaction on the rest of the fixtures in the drainage plan that aren't complete at this point.
I'm in total agreement. I'm just concerned that, that if there is an "as-is" clause, you may have bought something that you, you have some responsibility on. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
I would tend to disagree with you, because I'm looking at the people that represent the county in this kind of a situation, okay?
I understand.
If I don't have recourse against him,
Yep.
I would have recourse against the county, because y'all didn't do your job right, inspecting to make sure that he didn't sell me a pig and a poke.
I understand.
Okay?
I understand, but
And I really don't want to go there.
Yeah.
You know. I'd like to be able to settle it here. We're 120 days away from moving into our house, probably 65 to 90 days away from needing the dirt.
Yeah.
Okay? I don't need a protracted, long, drawn-out, you know, court case. Because we're trying to kind of finalize our last working years and get down to where we can retire,
Sure.
Like everybody hopes to do, and it's a chunk of money.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know, Mr. Everwater could probably tell you what topsoil is going for these days. I've been quoted anywhere from $2 to $250 a load, and I found a guy. Good topsoil sold to me for $160. So, I've done all the due diligence I can do, you know, in trying to eliminate as much expense in this having to get done. But I'm sure you're tired of hearing me talking.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Thank you.
Doug, you or Mike have any comments?
Well, I might have a couple. Being new to the engineering, county engineer, I had to do some background research. And I did, said, talk to Mr. Poole, and I also went and talked to David Alcorn, one of the developers. And, and I was not aware that they wanted to set up a meeting and didn't set up, the meeting never occurred. But from what I've been told is that they did try to bring fill material in the lot, to bring it up to what was designed on the lot, and Mr. Poole had stopped them, because it wasn't what he wanted as fill material. So, and I did some checking on what material could be used, and we have nothing in our regulations. It could be shot rock, it could be, you know, clay. But Mr. Poole had a point that if it's his lot, he has some say-so of what goes on to the lot. So, they tried to fill on his lot. He stopped him from it. And they did, after that, they offered to buy the lot back, and Mr. Poole declined that offer to buy the lot back. So, all I can say is, as from the engineering standpoint, we will have this on our radar, and we will definitely make sure everything is as it should be before the subdivision is closed out. It's still an active subdivision. We do, do hold a letter of credit on it. So, we will do everything we can to make sure it meets our requirements.
I understand, and I think that's what Mike was driving at a minute ago, but whose responsibility would it be? Him? Will it be Mr. Poole's, or will it be the developers, the original developer?
That
I know you'll, you'll see that it's done.
Yes, sir.
But whose responsibility is it?
That, that's a question for probably a legal team.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
Earn your pay, bud.
I don't know, honestly. I don't think, this is one of the problems kind of with airing, basically, having a lawsuit in front of the planning commission here is a challenge, because we don't know all the facts. So, we don't know if there's an "as-is" clause. We don't know what was put on the property. We don't know what the levels are. We don't know who tried to put clay and who didn't. We don't know whether or not topsoil would solve the problem. You don't know any of these facts. So, without knowing a whole lot So without knowing a whole lot of that, I don't really know the answer to who winds up holding the bag, so to speak. And so probably the furthest this commission can go, in my view, based on what we've heard, is to instruct Mike, which he's already said he will do, is to keep an eye on it and see where it goes. To the extent the county has an opportunity to do something, I would think the county would do that. If it doesn't, it doesn't. Ordinarily, most of these things are aired out between the buyer and the developer, not with the county, in most instances.
Well, can I comment on that? I understand your position, okay? Because you don't know all the facts. What I told Mike, and I told Eric the same thing, because Eric said, "Well, they could have filled it up with rock." And they could have. If they had done what they agreed to before they sold the lot to me. If you stand in front of my lot and you look front to rear, nine out of 10 of you, including Jamie, will tell you the lot drains from the front of the lot to the ditch in the back of it. And it doesn't. The berm at the ditch in the back of it is two foot taller than the curb. It is an optical illusion. So when we went out and we decided we were going to try and buy that lot, it was grown up, because the developer hadn't been keeping it mowed like he's supposed to. And we walked it, and it was originally a treed area, so there were lots of depressions and hollows in it from pushing out trees. And that was some of the things that we asked to have done to the lot, is to get it into the right shape before we bought it, or as a condition of purchase. I'm not a professional surveyor. I didn't think that buying a lot in a subdivision that is an approved plan should cause any concern to us, that it wouldn't drain properly or wasn't constructed properly. I wasn't buying a piece of virgin property that nobody had any idea what it would do, other than looking at a topo map on the GIS. So I think it's...I don't know that it's a special circumstance. I mean, it's a matter of a contract, I think. He had a contract with the county to build a subdivision according to the plan that he submitted and the county approved. I became a third party to that contract when I purchased the lot, because the specifications of the lot, as stated in the subdivision rules and regulations, says that the specifications of that lot on this drainage plan become part of the lot. My lot's not built that way. Does it make any difference if, you know, there was an as-is or not, the as-is it should have been? And that's my frustration with it. I understand it's your frustration. I still don't know where we're going with this. I mean, I can go back and pull the sales contract if that will help provide that to you. But there is a remedy within the subdivision rules for the situation, and it calls for the engineer to go get the money out of the account and fix the problem. Now, could have put shot rock on it if he owned it when he did it. He doesn't own it. Shot rock is $360 a truckload. Dirt from my supplier is $160. I'm saving $200 a load. I'm trying to do everything I can to minimize his expense to do what he said he would do in the first place. And I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Thank you.
Josh and Doug, just for...maybe it's just me, but a developer gets approval to develop some land and put houses on it. When they sell a lot, does that developer no longer be the developer of that lot? Is it the person who buys it? If there is this quote "as-is" clause in there, does Mr. Poole, is Mr. Poole now the developer? And will that responsibility, when it comes time for the final approval, the roads and those kinds of things, will it be his responsibility to repair all of those things that he thinks is someone else's responsibility? So my question is now, who's the developer? And who's responsible for that lot? That's something, Josh, I guess you said that you really didn't know, right?
Well, I mean, I think you're asking a...it's a complicated question.
I agree.
I think that the developer, the original developer, is still the developer. The owner of the lot, to me, if he's building his own house, is more akin to the builder. But I do think it matters, as between the buyer, Mr. Poole, and the seller, if there was an as-is clause, as between them, I think that's probably relevant, and none of our business, as the county. As between them, we weren't a party to that contract, one way or the other. The bond he's talking about, I assume, is a road bond, which is kind of a little bit different animal. There may be a bond out there still, but I'm not sure the intent of the road bond was to put fill dirt on Mr. Poole's lot that he approves. Maybe it is. I mean, that's something that could be evaluated. But in the ordinary sense, I think the road bond is to complete the roads, if they're not built to grade or to specifications. As to this idea of people going on other people's property, even that's really not that simple, because in many subdivisions, I don't know about this one, but in many subdivisions, you would have restrictive covenants. Lots of times, those restrictive covenants contain gross easements in favor of the developer for purposes of trying to complete the development. And when you take the lot, you're taking the lot with these implied easements across your lot for the purpose of completing the development. So whether or not the developer is criminally trespassing when they go on Mr. Poole's lot, I don't know the answer to that. We can't adjudicate that here, because we don't have all those facts. So to the extent Mr. Poole raises a potential problem with the subdivision regulations, it sounds like even that's been addressed in the new regulations. So we've got kind of an anomaly here with his situation, it sounds like to me. And, you know, I don't know, other than Mike digging into it and seeing as best he can, whether or not there's an actual violation of the zoning resolution that could be enforced by some methodology, what else this body would do.
Okay. Thank you, Josh.
You probably answered my question. The road board bond, how much was it, do you know? How much was that?
I don't have that in front of me, but it was quite substantial.
Well, he's asking to take part of that and address this problem, but that's probably not possible.
I would have to look and see the ramifications of that. Like you said, it's mainly for road construction, utilities, stormwater detention, and, I mean, the regulations does say grading, so I mean, it might be viable.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we just have one other item on the agenda. Not that we haven't had a lot on here, yes it is. But we have members here from Consolidated Utility District. You'll recall, when we were discussing the South Haven plan development, there was a lot of discussion about the issue of the width of the lots, and how wide they need to be in order to effectively accommodate the infrastructure required for step tanks and other utility connections and those kind of things. Their board has met and has passed a number of guidelines, requirements, if you will. And we've discussed them with Consolidated on several different occasions at this point, but we thought it'd be a good idea for them to come and make a quick, brief presentation to you all regarding...it really transcends just plan developments. This really is looking at step systems across any subdivisions that we look at. So with that, honestly, I'm not sure who's all here, to be quite honest. I know Jennifer's here, I'm not sure who else is here. But with that, I'll turn it over to them to let them make their presentation.
Have they made this presentation before the staff?
Yes, we've discussed it two or three times with them.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bill Zinnell, general manager, Consolidated Utility District. And we've brought a host of other people that have been involved in making this decision this morning. I'm not sure where to start, in light of the gentleman that just made his presentation to the board, kind of outlines some of the problems that we've seen, based on the lot width that we are now dealing with here in Rutherford County. I got some others here, too. I may have more information here than is necessary. I'm not going to take a long time with this. Just kind of my background. Okay. I'll put through these slides fairly quickly. I'll be concerned with all the paper. Doug, you want to go to the next slide? You know, originally, we were talking about lots that we were dealing with in Rutherford County, 100-foot width. And I wanted you to just pay close attention to that front yard, the hatchmarked area around what is the septic tank, which is the connection, our connection, initial connection with the sewer system. As you can see, in a 100-foot wide yard, there is a lot of room up front to make movements. You can move the tank one side or the other. It gives...that area around it is actually an easement, which allows us to access that tank, excavate that tank if necessary in the future, just literally work on the tank. So, next slide, Doug. What we're looking at today are 50-foot lot widths. And as you can see, the area around that we have to deal with gets extremely confined and virtually becomes untenable when it comes time to work or repair or replace these tanks. We talked about a 10-foot separation between water and sewer. That 10-foot width is a requirement, it's a design requirement, consideration under state law. And that same 10-foot restriction between water and sewer is also a nationwide requirement. Some states are actually even more stringent than what we have right here. The problem that we had the other day was that when we met, it was brought to us our attention that these are just design criteria and they're not a requirement under law. We did tell Doug that we would go back and speak to the state. I've spoken to two different people with the state. One said that they would not give us a notice of violation in the event that we were less than 10-foot. They said they didn't look at 9.6 or 9.8 as being a big problem. We asked what happens when it gets to be 7-foot. They didn't respond. And we did talk to the district manager for TDEC, in charge of enforcement in our area, and he told us that in the event that we got less than 10-foot, they would issue a notice of violation. So I did get two conflicting reports from two different individuals with the state. I will tell you this, we talked about the fact that this is a requirement nationwide. And the reason for that, I don't know if everybody fully understands this. If they do, I don't want to bore you with something you already know. But the bottom line is, if you end up with a leak in the water line, and it is adjacent to a sewer line, typically, the water line would have enough pressure on it that the water would be flowing out and sewage would not flow in. Therefore, it would be safe. In the event that you had a low-pressure vent on the water line, such as a line break or the water was off, or there was such thing as a back siphonage, where there was a big leak and the water was draining out of the line and actually pulling a vacuum on the line, then sewage around that line would actually go into the water line itself and back into the distribution system. That is the reason or the requirement for the 10-foot separation. When you look at this hashed area out front, it just becomes virtually impossible to maintain that separation. And we were looking at a 10-foot from the line itself. In reality, that tank is 6-foot wide, so you're talking about a 7-foot separation at this point, even on our drawing. Doug, if you go to the next line. We already have 50-foot lots in the system. And as you can see, here's an example of one that has step systems in it. We've got a meter that's been had to be relocated from the driveway over to the property line. We have others where the water and sewer service itself is 7-foot apart. We have one that's, what is that, 6 or 8.3 foot apart? I can't tell, even standing at this distance. We've got drainage easements between property lines. And again, in the very lower part, you're talking about water and sewer service 7-foot apart in the driveway. I take it that the last individual we spoke with at TDEC, I guess he would be issuing his notice of violation based on our own drawing. David Jones operates our step systems, and David is familiar with the problems associated with them. You know, a lot of times, things work well on paper. We talked about, you know, what was drawn up or what works well on paper. The bottom line is, if you ever have to excavate any of those septic tanks, they're surrounded by stone, crushed stone, and so the excavation is going to be quite large. David, you want to address any of those issues?
Good morning. As Bill said, my name is David Jones. My responsibility at CUD is to operate and maintain their decentralized wastewater treatment system, i.e. step systems, as most people refer to them. Excuse me, from an operation maintenance standpoint, our concern with these smaller lots, less than 65-foot wide, by the way, is the proximity of the tank to the driveway or traffic in general. The access lids on these tanks are not traffic-rated. Even on our 15 lots, in the past, we've had certain situations where a car has gotten on top and damaged one. And one of the key ingredients to successful operation of the step system or decentralized wastewater is that they are watertight and remain watertight, because these are small-flow systems. A typical 100-home subdivision would have a system designed for 30,000 gallons a day. That's not a lot of water. And if you have a broken lid, broken riser on one of these tanks, it takes on as little as a quarter of a gallon a minute during a rainfall event, you've exceeded the hydraulic capacity of that system by 120%. And they won't work. I don't care how good an operator you are, you can't put 10 gallons of water in a 5-gallon jug. So our concern, my concern, CUD's concern with these, the proximity of these smaller lots, is we're going to get more traffic on top of the lids and it will be damaged. And we've got, at present, we've got 4,150-some-odd tanks in the ground. And that build-out of the subdivisions we currently have, we'd have about 7,500. And we don't have the resources to run around police the conditions of these lids every day. Just can't do it. Unless the homeowner calls in or we stumble onto it, we're not going to find that these things are taking on extraneous water, which is a no-no. It's a killer for these systems. So we've agreed, a lot of discussion, we agree we can live with a 65-foot lot. I'd rather stay with our 15, but that's me. I'm the one that has to operate them. But anything less than 65, I just don't think it's going to create more problems, because this, CUD's in its 15-year of operating these decentralized systems. And I don't mind sitting here to tell you that they've been highly successful. If you don't believe me, call Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, they'll tell you. And we want to see it continue to be successful. So in doing so, we've got to make sure that we will look out up front before anything goes in and make sure it's going to do the job we want it to do down the road. As Bill pointed out, access for normal repair and maintenance activity, it's going to be hard to get a piece of equipment in there without stepping on everything else in the yard to do what we've got to do. Sometimes we've had a broken riser. See, these things are buried, the tank's buried about 16, 18 inches deep. And we have to excavate all the way down to the top of the concrete tank to cut that broken section out and replace it. It's a pretty involved operation. Got to have small excavators in there, but still, we're talking about a pretty good-sized piece of equipment for a 50-foot lot. So it just makes our life a lot more difficult in trying to operate in such a small environment. The tanks can't be any smaller. The 13-feet long, as Bill said, 6-feet wide. I just don't want to see it, the success of these systems in Rutherford County go downhill because of this. Now, that's my two cents worth. Anybody got any questions for me?
Yes, sir, I do. Mr. Jones, I do have a couple of questions. If you're having problems with lids and loading of lids and risers, why don't we improve our vault requirements? Because I know a little bit about precasting, and I know that typically, septic tanks are thin-walled and usually reinforced with chicken wire at best. And every mom and pop who thinks they're a precaster builds these in their barn. Why don't we just up the regulations on the requirements? Why don't we just up the regulations on the requirements of the vault and not have to worry about overloading the lids?
Well, for one thing, that we don't, we don't allow anybody, just anybody to build these tanks, put them in the ground. We've got four manufacturers of these tanks that we utilize. Very first thing we do when we put one in the ground is do a hydrostatic test on it. It'll completely full of water. That level can drop more than a quarter of an inch in twenty-four hours.
I understand that.
If it does, it's coming out of the ground.
I understand that.
Now, the original concept of the PVC riser, it's ribbed, it does have some structural integrity. But the lid is fiberglass. That makes them affordable. Sure, we could change that riser to some sort of metallic with a, with a traffic-rated lid, but it's just going to run a cost.
So your traffic, your, your traffic or your loading issues are not on the lid itself of the vault? It's the two risers that are coming up? Is that right?
The vertical load on top of that riser, it would probably withstand, it's sustaining it better than the lid itself is.
Okay. So, so the, the precast or poured-in-place vault structure is not your concern?
The, the concrete itself, no. Because like I said, it's sixteen, eighteen inches underground.
Okay. It's the risers that are coming?
Riser, that's got to be grade level, because that's how we access our equipment.
Okay.
To work on the pump, et cetera.
All right. And let me ask you. They're thirteen by six approximately. About sixteen to eighteen inches deep. Why do you have to have an excavator? Why don't two guys and a shovel clean that off?
Because we've got four thousand of them. We're assumed to have seventy-five-hundred of them. And we don't have that kind of time.
What is the life expectancy on these tanks?
We've kind of put a, the tank itself is probably open-ended. But we put a life expectancy on our, our sand filter equipment, the step tanks, of about forty years.
So just about the tank that's in the ground, you're saying that it lasts as long as the house does? It's the riser that you have trouble with?
It's the, it's the, it's the traffic that engages the riser that I'm having problems with. If this tank is sitting away from the driveway, and a teenager don't pull home in the driveway at night because he has nowhere to park, and he pulls up in the yard and wham, wheel falls in it.
Sure. Well, what I'm thinking, I, I know that the pumps inside of that is a relatively small thing of less than twelve inches in diameter and probably weighs fifty or sixty pounds. So you wouldn't need an excavator to get to that. And if I was going to dig around that, that lid to replace the riser or whatever with all of those wires and, and pipes coming out of that riser, I don't think I'd use an excavator there. I mean, it's only sixteen inches deep. And it's disturbed soil. It should dig a whole lot easier with a shovel than an excavator. So I'm just trying to, in my mind, see why you need so much room to get an excavator in there if it doesn't make sense to get an excavator in there.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I mean, typically, on a riser like that, you're correct. I mean, you would go in there probably with a shovel or a small mini ax and, and excavate it that way. Obviously, you have to worry about the wiring and the rest of it. When it comes time, but we have to get in there and replace the tank. We're faced right now with some easements that are ten-foot wide. Is that correct? Now, that slipped past us, okay? But the bottom line is, if you've got to go replace the tank, you're going to dig up the whole front yard, it's surrounded by stone. The width on a, if you use tobacco, with the outriggers down, is what, ten foot? So when you, my point is, for what you're talking about, you're a hundred percent correct. Can we change the lids on the risers? You're a hundred percent correct. We can do that. What's the difference in the price of a cast iron lid?
It'd be, it'd add three hundred dollars to the cost of the tank.
Okay. That three hundred dollars goes to the?
Homeowner.
Homeowner, yeah. So, yeah, that is very real. That's very possible.
I think one of your problems is that, what Jim's leading to, is we're saying here it's going to last for forty years, and which we hope it lasts for forty years. But the one that don't last for forty years is the one that we go in, we tear up the whole front yard, we tear up the shrub which she set out, which she's over the ten-foot, the homeowner's over ten-foot. Over the years, it's grown out over everything. All that goes away. All that goes away. So you need common sense working area. Not pinch it in where you elbow-to-elbow.
I think the gentleman that was here before made a lot of sense. You know, it works well on paper, but when you get there, it doesn't quite work that way. And that's exactly what we've seen. And I think that's what this drawing or this, this, as Bill, as we've seen here with some of the fifty-foot lots indicates. We've had people, builders, come in, put house plans. So suddenly, we've got sewer over here and the water over here. Now, we've got to flip these things over. You know, that, those driveway widths. I think on the plans that we showed you, eighteen-foot driveway width, I don't know if any of you have ever parked two cars side-by-side on an eighteen-foot driveway, but you certainly won't open your inside doors to get out hardly. I mean, stop. And the outside doors, when you step out typically, you're going to be stepping out in the grass. So a lot of these things end up being twenty-foot as an extension additive. The bottom, my point being is, you see those in inches, maybe feet, on paper, where there's room there. In reality, when you get out in the real world, how many lots do you have come back for a amended flat? Because the home isn't built, is built too close to lot line, right? And so suddenly, you've got to move this lot line over in order to allow them to conform. And that is the whole intent of, of the, the sixty-five-foot restriction that we want for step systems is not because we have any desire at all to talk about lot widths as far as zoning or any of the rest of it. It has no bearing on any of that. It has to do strictly with our ability to maintain separation. We even talked about the, the idea of moving the, the water meters into the driveways. I mean, that's possible. The problem is that they'll have to be buried deeper because the concrete, four inches, you have stone underneath that. When your frost now goes, instead of being at whatever typical depth is, you immediately got another four to eight inches that's going to be deeper. When we go to repair that or replace that, we've got to go in and tear out somebody's driveway to make that happen. You know, I may have a right to do it. We have a right to do a lot of things. Doesn't necessarily make the homeowners happy when we go do those things. But probably the biggest issue from CUD's standpoint is if there's a one-quarter-inch gap in that lid, which we didn't pour the concrete around, and somebody trips on that lid, we end up getting sued. We just finished a lawsuit for an apartment complex over here off Case and Lane. It lasted several years because there was a one-quarter-inch lip. And the gal tripped on that and, and sprained her ankle. We start putting these things in areas where people walk on a consistent basis. And now, it's just, it's additional liability concern. So that's one of the reasons that we don't look at that as even being a realistic possibility. Bottom line is, we keep getting smaller, smaller, and smaller, but we still have to have room to work. Doug, you want to go to the next slide? I mean, and that's basically all this is. The difference between a fifty-five, a fifty-foot lot, three-six and sixty-five, as you can see, there's a building to have a, an area that we can work in and still maintain other areas to, to do other things with, get our lines on. Doug, let's go to the next slide, real quick. This one, if you can read that up there, you're better than I can. I'm standing right here and I can't read it, but you do have a handout in front of you. Because of the problems that we've seen in the smaller lots, that's where these, the decentralized wastewater system lot requirements came from. And I'm going to let Brian address those.
Just for everybody, this is, what's on here is also the same thing that I think is on this. It's a little... Brian Bradl, Consolidated Utility District, project manager. I oversee a lot of the inspection and the new construction going into these developments. As Bill mentioned, we have gone through a long, extensive process. We've been looking at these lot widths for probably six months or better. We did approach our board with some rules and regulations we'd like to, you know, move forward with. This was presented to them in three different meetings. These are some of what they have set forth as far as minimum lot requirements. They are more stringent than the zoning and subdivision regulations the county has with the lot widths and so forth there, most of which is going to pertain to CUD down at the bottom. The biggest part that'll pertain to subdivision design will be the first three or four bulletin points there with a minimum lot width of sixty-five foot, which is what our board has approved. This does also include cul-de-sac lots. As cul-de-sac lots were getting down so narrow at the point at the right-of-way that we were unable to achieve service separations and driveways and things like that, as you saw on the slide there. Minimum setback, one of the issues we've had, we had a couple of subdivisions got approved with twenty, twenty-five-foot setbacks out there. It becomes an issue when you've got a thirteen-foot-long tank and you've got to have the tank ten foot from a house, but yet, service connection three to five foot behind the property line. You just don't have enough room. So with, without sidewalks in a development, thirty-five-foot minimum setbacks on the front, with sidewalks in a development would be forty foot because you've got that additional five foot of sidewalk. Because we don't, as Bill said, we don't want our meter boxes or service connection and valve boxes and stuff in sidewalks for liability purposes. Ten-foot separation between water and sewer services, just to achieve that safety for the customers and stuff there based upon the design criteria of TDEC that we have been referenced, you know, like I say, in a few phone calls lately with TDEC. TDEC, excuse me. The step tanks meters will not be allowed in driveways. Again, liability issues. And also, the issue with the customer and public relations of dealing with those on a constant basis. I deal with them all the time, and Bill does, too. Customer comes back, we're digging in the front yard three years later because we've got a leak. And you don't have an easement, you don't have the right to be there, you know, things like that. We get that argument all the time. So people are more aware of things and what goes on in their front yard this day and time than they used to be. Step tanks themselves being located a minimum of ten foot from any property line. That's also a guideline that's set forth by TDEC. The step tanks being located a minimum of ten foot from any structure or driveway that should be located in the front yard between the structure and road right-of-way. No tanks will be allowed in the rear of any structure. Again, the step tanks and locations and dimensions, things like that, are things that CUD takes on the burden of. It's not something that planning commission, you know, takes on the burden of with that. We will also be requiring on CUD's side, going forward, any lots eighty feet and less in width will be requiring a plot plan to be submitted before that lot is constructed on, where we can see where the services are going to hit, where the house is going to be, the driveway and stuff, for our benefit. And we'll be inspecting that in the field to make sure it, you know, is built to that specification and what's been submitted to us. Because the lots are getting smaller and smaller with the constraints that are there. The, the, we do already have step tank permits in place that have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit fee. In addition, for these lots that are eighty feet and less for the review and inspection processes, they're going to go into more detail on CUD's purpose, there will be a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar review fee for that. This just pertains to eighty feet and less in width for lots that are on step systems. Doesn't go to any of the subdivisions you looked at today that are on septic and so forth. Again, with the cul-de-sacs and that kind of stuff. This just strictly applies to decentralized wastewater system subdivisions. And we do intend to inspect and make sure that the plot plans are built accordingly of what's submitted to us. Otherwise, water service will not be established, you know, at that point with the developer or home builder, whoever builds that structure there on that lot. That way, we do and can meet these requirements and set forth for ITDEC and where we need to be to safely protect the customers and ratepayers of CUD. I know that was kind of a quick overview, if anybody's got any questions.
Question for you. The, the, the requirement that you're asking for a plot plan designed by a professional engineer for lots less than eighty feet, that's new, right?
That's for us at CUD, yes.
And tell me why you, if you're trying to hold us to a sixty-five-foot minimum width, why do you need all that information?
Because even with a sixty-five-foot minimum width, you still have constraints of where the service is. When these developments are constructed, your sewer service and your water service are installed the day the main lines go in, in the development. So down the road, the home builder comes in, not knowing where those are. They don't look at a lot of that stuff when they come in, in the field. They look at the lot and which side may or may not have a driveway on the adjoining lot, and that's the way they want to flip it. And looking at that, these are all items that could affect the building and construction on that lot with a small, narrow lot, based on the existing utilities.
All right. Couple, couple of points in regards to that. You're, you're going to charge two-hundred-and-fifty for that review. And then, some PE's got to draw it up. So that's another five or six-hundred-dollar bill, perhaps. So we're basically increasing almost a thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm not a big fan of that. And let me ask you this. If you're going to require that professional engineer to do each one, why does that, does that not give us, give us, being the developer, give us the leeway then to look at each lot individually? So if you encroached on that eighty feet, if, if on paper, it fits, can you not take an exception then to that eighty-foot requirement?
As far as, I don't know that I'm quite understanding.
If you're, if you're wanting somebody to spend a thousand bucks to put everything on paper for you to review, and you look at it and you see, yeah, that, I could, that all fits on something less than sixty-five feet? Why, why could we not, on, on lots that perhaps are a special exception? Can you not then not require that sixty-foot limit? If, if it all fits, if you get a PE stamp and it's all looks good, why does it have to meet sixty-five feet?
The, well, I mean, it all, all does look great on paper. But when you get out there and build it in the field, if you've got, you know, you get a contractor out there in the field that's putting services in and stuff down through there, too. Or even that, you get a home builder in here that wants to add two foot to a garage that pushes the house over two more foot. If you've got your services in the specified place based on a driveway location from a construction plan, these construction plans are going to have to get more and more detailed because you're going to have to have the water service and the sewer service exactly where they need to go. Common industry practice is the sewer service goes to the center of the lot. We're not going to be able to do that with these lots, even at sixty-five foot. So the services are going to have to be placed exactly on what type home is going to be built on that lot up front before they even get ready to build the house. They have very little variance on that. With fifty-foot-wide lots, you're not even going to have that. I don't think the developers and the home builders are going to want to go out there and say, "You've got to have this house on this lot before you even get there." And that's what's going to happen. And we commonly do not see that in this industry. You get a homeowner that wants to buy something or add a few feet to the garage, or add a few feet to this. That's not going to happen. When you get out there, you know, on these small lots like this, the sixty-five foot does have some variable built in for that, you know, to be able to shift that back and forth and around a little bit. The fifty-foot does not. And that's what we've looked at. You know, we've looked at these for probably over six months now in-house. We've been out, we've looked at fifty-foot-wide lots in the city where they've already developed there, looking at lot widths, not necessarily setbacks, but what goes on with the city lots like that. We've looked at, you know, where we've come from with hundred-foot-wide lots, and that's where we felt comfortable with. Does it have a little flexibility for the home builders and the developers out there when they get to that point? You know, and miss something by a foot or two? Yes, it does. The fifty-foot does not have any of that available. You're basically going to build the house that's set up for it right up front as specified by the developer. If he's selling lots to those home builders, that's where it becomes an issue, too.
Mike, I'm going to interject just a minute. Right now, our maintenance department says that in the last few years on these smaller lots, they've been moving sixty to seventy percent of the taps because things get flipped, moved, whatever, just trying to maintain distance and not being able to. Unfortunately, well, we had not been charging for that up until recently. We had the authority under policy discharge, and we just kind of went out and moved things around, trying to make it adjust. But we talk about the five-hundred or the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. We ended up spending a significant amount of money trying to make these accommodations happen after the fact. I'm hoping, I'm not a developer, I'm hoping, I'm not a developer, but I'm hoping that, you know, you're gonna have a, like a cookie cutter layout for these things, where, okay, it's got a right-hand drive, and this is where it needs to be. Unfortunately, it's gonna take away a little bit of individual thought or design on some of these things, but the intent is to keep us from, everybody from going back after the fact and moving things around and spending money after the fact. I can tell you right now, a host of these, we're spending over $500 a lot right now making these moves, for the last few years that we haven't been charging for. You know, one of the things that comes to mind, I called Jamie last week, and I said, "Ask Jamie why they, if we wanna get down to fifty-foot lot width, why did we not consider rear entrances? Because the minute we take the driveway out to lay in the front yard, suddenly we don't have an issue." I don't know if that's Bible or not, I'm not, again, I'm not a developer, but it's certainly an alternative if we wanna get below that sixty-five-foot minimum, to give the sewer system more room in the front to make things happen and accommodate that. Yeah, you're gonna give up a, I don't know what the, what's an alley width, fourteen-foot, Jamie, do you know?
On average, basically, we do it one-way or two-way. I'm thinking of twenty-foot access easement if we did something like that.
So, you're giving off, you're giving up twenty-foot across fifty-foot, which is 500 square foot, right? And you're picking up, you're taking back fifteen-foot, what is the depth of those lots, Brian?
Most of them, I average, 110s, 130s.
Whatever that is, you're actually picking up more area with the fifty-foot lot width. But it's, you know, that's something for a design engineer to come back and give us something to work with, but it seems to me there may be another possibility there as well. I know that, talking to Jimmy Haley about, who is our design engineer, about some of the things that he's recently seen in Franklin, and he said, you know, he's seen them with fourteen-foot one-way alleys on the backside. But, anyway, that's, that's something for you people to consider. Certainly, if we have an opportunity to maintain separations and have the ability to work on our septic tanks out front, we'll be more than happy to entertain that.
One thing, just to add to what Bill was saying there, is that what we looked at on these sixty-five-foot wide lots was specifically two front-entry garages with the driveways in the front. We did not look at the lot widths and depth, going to the rear entry and alleyways behind there, narrowing those down to smaller lots. So, that's what this pertains to, is just strictly front entries at this point.
And I don't think we didn't call that out when the board made the motion, but if we can come up with a suitable fifty-foot lot width and a way to accommodate, we'll certainly take that before the board makes that amendment. A lot of information, I understand, and, again, CUD has no desire to be, you know, we're talking about lot widths in order to maintain separations and to conform to state law. You know, these septic tanks, these decentralized wastewater systems, I don't know that when we started this process, we all, we thought about the small lot sizes or, you know, high-density housing for these things. I guess we're gonna have to take a look at that, you know, one of the things when Jamie and Bob Parks came before our, you know, at some point in time, when do you look at zero lot lines? And if we'd looked at zero lot lines, then what do, how do we accommodate step tanks there? I don't have the answer to that. But, certainly, we're gonna be faced with a lot of these things, we're gonna have to look at some alternative solutions, I guess.
Mike, what are your thoughts?
Well, I've, I've looked into this too, and, and been, doing some research, and, and I'm, like Bill said, I'm finding conflicting information on TDEC requirements. I found one document says that for wastewater, they're guidelines, they're not hard and fast rules that, you know, have to be ten-foot apart. The water line information I found, it referred to water mains and sewer mains have to be ten-foot apart, and, but the sewer service lines are left up to municipalities and utilities to place restrictions on. It's kinda funny, though, that once you get past CUD's step tank and water meter, it falls under the International Building Code, and they allow a lot closer separation for water and sewer lines. You essentially can have the same water and sewer in the same trench, as long as there's a vertical separation between the two. I, I have several questions about this. I question CUD's authority to establish minimum lot widths. I think that's something that the, the county was, was given from state legislature and, and the Planning Commission as well. So, I, I have a question about that, that might be a legal issue. I think, I see possible legal challenges coming up in the future if we, as a, as a commission adhere to our regulations, which conflicts with CUD's. I could see possible lawsuits in the future, but that, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I don't know about that. And if, if you establish a minimum sixty-five foot, and Bill says, "Well, if a developer brings in an alley subdivision with fifty-foot lots, you're conflicting with their, one of their requirements." So, that's, something needs to be addressed. That's just, that's a big question to me. Another thing is, if you're requiring sixty-five foot at the right-of-way on cul-de-sac lots, which, which widen out to big pie shapes, you're essentially eliminating cul-de-sacs from the design repertoire, because, I mean, developer's not gonna build two lots on the end of a cul-de-sac. I mean, he's, it's just not gonna be worthwhile feasibly to do that. So, I could see a conflict there. But, another question I have is, what happens to the previously approved subdivisions that are in the pipeline, already approved, already designed, that, that don't meet these, these regulations? They, you know, they, it's gonna be a question that we'll have to address as we move forward. But, there's, you know, I, I understand their situation, you know, I've, I've designed a lot of, a lot of subdivision lots, and, and things are really tight. You've, you've got a, you know, developer saying, "Well, I need to make this financially viable, and, but I need, you know, to make this work out." And, and I also understand the, the maintenance issue of it too. So, it's, it's gonna be a tough, tough transition.
I will state this, that the regulations that we're attempting to adhere to are for the safety of the general public. I don't necessarily agree with all regulations that the state and the federal government promulgate and that we follow, but the bottom line is, I think we have a responsibility to follow those regulations. You know, if we can put out on a piece of paper that we're gonna set a water, one of the questions, or one of the issues that was raised here a minute ago, was when you get beyond the meter, when you get to the private service lines, why is there a difference between that and the distribution system? Well, probably one of the biggest differences is that our meter has a check valve in it. So, if you lay a water and sewer line, and your service line's side by side, and you end up with a situation where your service line gets contaminated with your sewage, the only one that's gonna drink that is you. It's not gonna end up back in the distribution system and end at your neighbor's home. It's not gonna be a health issue for the general public as a whole, it's gonna be a health issue for you personally. And so, yeah, there, there are different regulations for different things, you know, again, when we see these design criteria, and we are supposed to, as registered professional engineers, conform to these design criteria for the health and safety of the general public, I can assure you right now, right now, we stamp off on plans, I stamp off on plans, I sign the state stamp that allows them to move forward. If I get to the point where I'm seeing things coming through the door that are, do not conform to those standards, I'll ship them off to the state and let the state stamp them, because I'm not gonna put my personal liability and my professional reputation at stake, because somebody's trying to make money. And that's kinda the bottom line. I'm, we don't come up with these for the, I don't wanna talk about sixty-five foot, I don't care. If you can get them on us, if you can make a sixteen-foot drive entrance and get people in there, that's fine. If that's what people want, I don't care. But, as long as we're here to protect public health and safety from a CUD standpoint, that is our responsibility.
Fifteen, sixteen years ago, when this was started, I was on the Planning Commission and I'm CUD board, and I pushed for, to do it on plan, and Mayor Allen was the county executive at that time, and the only way step system were gonna come into this county, the CUD had to take 'em over. There was not gonna be any private, no homeowner associations, no, CUD was gonna take over. This kind of stuff wasn't even on the radar then. And, just when our board made the decision on sixty-five foot, we had several meetings, and I told you this before, we had several meetings, and this just wasn't a knee-jerk thing, when we pulled out, Jimmy Haley, our consulting engineer, we sent him back, sent him away to come back and come with, with something that we could live with, and this is what we could live with. Now, some of these back alleys and all that, I'm sure our board would be willing to change some of the criteria on that, if we look at something different. But, this, this has been a long process, and, and, and CUD is, is not gonna get out on a limb. CUD is gonna be, they're not gonna be overkill, but it's certainly not gonna be underkill with CUD's board.
I think one of the things that's important to note, is a good share of these developments that occurred in the rural areas of Rutherford County have occurred because of the step systems. A lot of these areas, I mean, if you've got 160 acres out there, and you've got 20 acres with good soils, without the step systems, you would be developing 20 acres. Whereas CUD, when it comes to decentralized wastewater systems, something I'm very proud of, and I called Larry McElroy here a few weeks ago, because I think Larry can be the one that is very proud of, they started when Larry was here. But, the bottom line is, CUD was invited to attend the World Water Tech Conference in Canada by the Canadian Department of Environment and whatever, to, to talk about decentralized wastewater systems and how they work in this nation today. We're considered one of the industry leaders. We're not doing this in an attempt to stifle development, we're just trying to do that to make sure it's done properly. So, again, you know, do we have a right to settle a lot width? No. Do we have a right to say how far separation is between those two things? You're 100% correct. So, if, you know, maybe we don't, maybe we shouldn't reconsider the lot width, maybe we should just reconsider how far the separation should be and, and move on from there, so.
Seems, seems reasonable. I mean, if they're gonna require a site, a plot plan, you know, if, if an engineer can say, "Well, I can make this work," it seemed like it would be feasible to, to set it up to that and leave it to that.
Yeah, and I would agree with, with Mike on that, and, you know, I kinda share, well, I do share his concerns when he talks about, when we start reviewing Platts and Plans, and we had this discussion with CUD the other day. When I'm looking at these subdivisions, I'm not looking at it from CUD's standpoint, I'm looking at it from what the county regulations say. If they have the minimum they're required to have at the right-of-way, which is a lot more than sixty-five, or a lot less than sixty-five feet in most cases, and does it meet our lot width requirements, which we measure at the setback line, not at the property line, at the right-of-way line? So, it's gonna be incumbent on them to catch a lot of that, because I, all I can do is say, "This is what our regulations say, this is what, this is what, if it meets our requirements or not." You know, they're gonna have to come back and say, "These are the changes that need to be made because of the fact of the, the step tanks and the different utility connections maybe not fitting." But, I kinda, what, what Bill was just talking about, might be a better approach to just say, you know, "These are the minimum line separations that we're looking for here, and if it happens to be on a 55 versus a 65-foot lot, so be it." You know, because that would also take into account these issues, like he's talking about on the screen here, with these private, private drives in the back. You know, rather than say, "You have to have 65-foot lot width, but we'll look at each one on a case-by-case basis if you have something like that," just say, "These are the separations you have to maintain." Let somebody bring something in and say, "Does this meet that?" And let them decide from there. That way, they don't even get into that issue with lot width.
Well, one of the things that I wanna bring out, you know, we're talking about water and sewer here, you still gotta get telephone and cable in there, and if you've got gas lines, you gotta get gas lines in there. You know, when I see my crews working in a trench with an electric cable suspended over their head, held in place by straps, to keep it, I mean, that's basically what we're doing. That's, we're trying to get everything down so somebody can maximize their profit. We, our, our primary concern, public safety, so.
It's not always maximizing profits. A lot of it is, is eliminating unneeded sprawl, so, I mean, that's, that's an issue too. I mean, there's agricultural areas that need to stay agricultural, and some areas that need to develop as residential, so, I mean, it's, it's a balancing act, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, I hope we're gonna get into the fire hydrant issue too, are we not? Are we gonna talk about that at all?
Didn't have any plans to, what, what issue you've?
Well, we talked about a hybrid system out there, didn't that not have to come back before this committee for approval or not at this point?
South Haven.
Oh, South Haven. I'm sorry. We were talking about sixty-five-foot lot width, I'm sorry.
I mean, we.
I understand.
I mean, we had, I, that wasn't on the agenda to discuss. It's going to the county commission, but.
All right, well, that information is included in that packet, and, for your review, I just, since I happen to have the floor, if you don't mind, I just wanna make one statement. I understand there was some concern about South Haven and the water extension out there that we're looking at the developer to put in, and there were, the question came, what does CUD have involved in this? The bottom line is, there's $2.5 million investment, 12-inch line down Amleville Road back in '12, I think it was, that would, that makes this thing possible today. If it hadn't been that $2.5 million investment by CUD, you wouldn't even be talking about it. There's also another $2.25 million extension coming in from the west side on 96, to help accommodate flows to that area as well. It's for the system as a whole, it's not specifically for that particular development. And, finally, I just, you know, you talked about one here earlier, that's been on the board, it's been renewed year after year, and, at what point do you quit renewing it? The reason it's been on the board year after year after year is because there was no water out there for fire protection, there was no water out there, really, domestic water service was a much smaller and a very minute portion of that system could have been developed. The bottom line is, CUD recently went in and approved line extensions out there, which is gonna improve fire flow and, and tank, which will allow fire flows out in that area, a lot of areas that have red-top hydrants, and, but that didn't come because of that one particular subdivision, it came to enhance that entire area. That subdivision will now be able to move forward because of those improvements, so I just wanted to bring that to light. Thank you.
Thank you again. Are you done, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What's our budget meeting?
We haven't set one yet.
Mr. Kush, just because we're still waiting on some of the information that we need from finance before we really get going, but it'll probably be mid-February.
Okay. So, does this, this board just accept what's, what CUD is proposing here? We rewriting our regulations, or what is it that we're supposed to be doing here?
Well, Craig, I don't think, at this point, there's really any need to rewrite any regulations, as they've stated, that these regulations really are for step system subdivisions only. Like the couple subdivisions we looked at earlier, the Hall Farm subdivision, and then the Blackberry Farm, I think was the other one, but both of those were the conventional septic tank. So, what they're talking about here wouldn't apply to any of that, anyway. There are, there are some regulations in both our subdivision regs and our zoning, there's a statement in both of those that basically says, "If the rules and regulations here conflict with any other rules and regulations, then the most restrictive shall apply." I think that covers the county from that standpoint. I'm still gonna be looking at Platts and Plans, and Mike's gonna be looking at Platts and Plans with our eye toward, "Does this meet the county's regulations?" I think with some of the discussion we had here, you know, with standing the, the lot width issue, if, if maybe, like Buck, Bill suggested, that maybe that some of that language has changed just to say, you know, "These are the minimum sizes of the separations that have to be done," as opposed to saying, "You have to have an X amount of lot width." That might serve this whole situation better, I think, but I don't think, just the long way to answer, I don't think there's any reason to rewrite anything in our code right now.
Well, I'm just wondering why we should even exist here? If CUD is now writing our regulations for us, do we need to even look at these things at all? I mean, does this planning commission even have a purpose anymore? You know, my next question is, I guess, why was CUD given this exclusive authority to manage these step systems if there are other companies out there that do this same thing? Is it not possible to have these other business, these other companies that do this come in and say, "Well, you know, we don't, we don't require that, can we take over some of this?" Is this an exclusive territory, or are there competitive options here?
Well, I know Mr. Lynch discussed it a little earlier when these first came online. Now, I understand, these have been in existence for some time, long before Mike or I, either one of us started working here. I don't know if I can give you a good answer to that question beyond what Craig's already said.
I, I know that it was Mayor Allen's, that she, and I think the county commission also, they didn't want an individual to come in, they wanted somebody responsible in the county to, to take, take it over and be in charge of it, rather than somebody, and you're right, there's, there's individuals out there.
Well, I know there's some very large companies that do it, and I think one of them's just based very close by here, might even be based in this county that does it in other, for other counties and other parts of the country. It's a nationwide company. Have we ever talked about options that are available here? Or do we just accept the status quo as?
I mean, I can say, since I've been here, that conversation that I'm aware of has never taken place, at least from the Planning Commission's standpoint. Beyond that, I can't answer that.
I, I see a huge opportunity for somebody, just crunching some quick numbers here, I see, you know, over $100,000 a month revenue coming here. I can't imagine that it's that hard to manage this thing. Surely, there's somebody that's interested in taking this over. Who do we go to, I mean, can we, is it possible to, who, who's responsibility with the county, would it be to interview other companies that could possibly, possibly do this?
Jim, I think what I'd have to do at that point is have some discussions, probably with Mayor Burgess, and, and get back with you on that. I, I don't have an answer to that, I really don't know. I, I don't have an answer to that, I really don't know.
Well, you know, the, part of the problem is we spend a lot of money on new zoning and subdivision regulations. And the trend, as we see nationally, is that home buyers want smaller lots, smaller homes. That, that's well documented. Jim, Jim, I think what Jim said is, this is, this really should be a planning issue and not somebody telling us what we have to do. And that's what I think is upsetting a little bit. I'm all for, I'm all for protection of safety, public welfare, but are CUD's requirements more restrictive than our own state requirements? I'd like to see that document and go through it. You know, building code is minimum standards, doesn't mean you can't do more, but if doing more interferes with our ability to plan, then I, I have a problem with that, so. Planning comes first, I think. Well, I don't think, I know, in this case, planning should come first. And I understand CUD's issues. We just need to make sure that we can do both by protecting the welfare and safety of our citizens and yet not let the utility district dictate how we grow. It's not their responsibility, that's our responsibility.
Go ahead.
It is not the utility district dictating, it's the utility district's intention to conform to state law and state regulation, as well as federal law and federal regulation. If you can get somebody from the state of Tennessee to sign off and absolve our liability for any health issues that these regulations were promulgated around, it's fine with us.
Well, the, is this, and I don't know, I would like to read it and see, are the state requirements as stringent as what your CUD requirements are?
We're trying to conform to state requirements. We're, the 10-foot separation is a design criteria promulgated by the state, which is, I think, held in all 50 states, but I'm not certain. I did call several other engineers from various states, all with the exception of one, said 10-foot was a rule. The one from Illinois said the 10-foot was a rule unless there was a septic tank involved, and then it was 25-foot. So my point is, if some PE from state of Tennessee is willing to sign off that these things are fine, then I guess we probably don't have an issue. We do have a problem, I guess, of getting all these things in, I mean, at some point in time, we gotta dig one out, but the 10-foot separation is what is critical to us, and that is our understanding of our requirement to conform to state law. It's not an attempt to tell Rutherford County how to develop, how to grow, it's not an attempt to tell a developer how small they can get, it's not our intent to try to control what sort of profit can be made on a development, it's our intent to protect public safety based on our requirements. So if you can get somebody to sign off on that and allow it to be done, I will say this, one of the things that concerns me, we talk about the planning process, draw one up and send it before the state and let them sign off on it before you approve it. Because what happens if you approve smaller lots, you approve all these things that go in, the state doesn't, will not approve the water plans and water and sewer plans based on how it's designed, then who's responsible for that? So I mean, I, draw it up, we'll send it in the state and let them sign off on it. If they'll sign off on it, then we'll talk. I, I want to make one other comment while I'm standing here, I guess. There are other operators in this state. If you, I would suggest that you talk to TDEC about the consolidated utility districts' operations versus some of the other operators in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, you wanna, you wanna check with Mayor Burgess on some other things, and you wanna come back with some additional information and follow up with us at some point in time?
That's what you'd like us to do, we can do that, absolutely.
That's what we'd like for you to do.
Just, I'm, I'm, I'm asking this because I don't know, and I need, I need to be educated. Is this something that we would, the, the commission would vote on to accept this, or do we have no, do we have no say?
I, I think there's some additional information that could come. We just pointed out state regulations and what they are, and if we can adhere to state regulations and setback regulations, I, there's some flexibility there, that's just what I heard. So that's the additional information that I'd like to get from the state and see what involvement the state seems to have and influence that they have not only over us but CUD as well.
I'd like to think that we could work together and they'd be somewhat aligned, our regulations and their regulations, and not work against each other.
So would we?
Let me, let me sum up my opinion as this. Certainly, number one is the safety, protection of the safety and welfare of the citizens. They would need good drinking water, they need the toilets to flush and, and properly disposed of. And I'm okay with the minimums that are needed for that to happen. I'm not so sure I'm in agreement with, because it's inconvenient if we have to go and replace a riser, that it messes up Granny's prize rose bush. That should not dictate our minimum lot widths. You know, when you're a homeowner, there's things that are gonna happen that is not gonna be very fun, and having to put a new tank out in your front yard may be it. But I don't think those, because it's inconvenient, or because it, you might tear up the whole front yard, I don't think that's a basis to require the whole county to have a minimum lot width. That's my opinion.
Doug, where are you going? Can you summarize this for us and what, what's gonna happen, the information that you're gonna bring back to us?
Well, I mean, at this point, I think, you know, we'll get this information together, we'll probably have some more meetings with officials from CUD to kind of see how at all plays in with what our regulations are. I'm still not of the opinion, at this point at least, that we need to make any changes to our regs. Like I said, I think there's kind of a catch-all in both the subdivision regulations and the zoning that say, if there's other regulations out there that are more restrictive, then, you know, whatever's the most restrictive applies. Now, they are the ones providing the utility service, so, I mean, we have to, you know, keep in mind, we do have to work with them in this and to make sure we come to something that's gonna work for, for both sides. But at this point, you know, without going further, I think, let's get the information together, let's look at it all, let's see, is there a better way to go about this than maybe what we've got presented to you all today and what we've had presented to us as staff within the last couple of weeks? If that's acceptable to everybody.
Yeah, I don't know how long it'll take to get this back, but let's bring it back to this day meeting, let's don't do it.
In February?
Whenever, whenever we can work some of this out, in February, March, or whatever, let's do it.
You're just saying do it at a day meeting as opposed to a night?
And let's do it at the front of the meeting where nobody, where we have a good crowd to stay here. I know we put this meeting off for two or three months so we would be able to do it in this forum right here and where we would have plenty of people here to do it, and we thought we had picked a time where it was gonna be a light schedule. But obviously, this is one of the heaviest schedules we have.
Unfortunately, yeah, we don't have a whole lot of.
We need everybody to attend.
Yeah, no, I agree, and unfortunately, just when it comes to these meetings, we just don't always know, a month or two out, what kind of load we're gonna get from meeting to meeting, but we'll definitely keep that in mind when we think it's gonna be more of a light load.
But we do know number one on the agenda.
Yes, we, and we can do that. Rather than putting it under other business, we can definitely put that in the, the main body, so to speak, of the agenda.
Saying that, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February the 9th, and that's a 6:00 PM meeting over at the courthouse. Our next morning meeting is scheduled for February the 23rd, I believe, and that would be 9:00 AM here. If that information is available then, but if not, all that information is available, there's nothing magical about bringing it at that time.
Yes, sir. Just so everybody knows, we will have the, the budget at the next day meeting, but that generally just takes about five, 10, that's generally not a real time-consuming item.
Anybody have anything else?
You made a motion.
No, we don't. I just, I just want to thank the planning commission members. I can remember 20 years ago, Craig, where nobody would have asked any questions because nobody knew enough to ask any questions, and this commission is much more educated and much more into things and are looking out not only for the best interest of the citizens of the county, but the best interest for all people concerned, CUD included and other utilities as well. But thank you for your attention and your willingness to serve and also your faith in Mike and I as we're going forward to lead this commission, but also, I'd once again like to thank Craig. I know he's got some, a final tour that'll last a year, you know, that's how they usually do it on certain things, so we'll have many other opportunities to roast him as this year goes by. Once again, Craig, thank you for, for everything that you've done for this commission and for this county. We're adjourned.